...other engineering consulting firms because we just only do focus on those two things. So we've done lots and lots of different water and wastewater projects around the world, primarily in North and South America. And because of that, Engineering News Record named us number one firm in the U.S. that exclusively focuses on water wastewater. And again, we're in a bit of a unique class by only focusing on that. So just wanted to give you a little quick background about that. But we do have offices all over the United States, primarily in Eastern United States. But more importantly, for your situation here, is our local offices. I mean, that's really what Aizen's story is about. We are a firm of 750 people. But we're the type of firm that while we have national expertise in both the water and wastewater areas, we really pride ourselves on operating more like a small, local firm. And our clients range from a wide variety of firms. The largest client's New York City, and we've done some of their water infrastructure projects. But we do, we serve clients across the full gamut and pretty much all municipal water and wastewater utilities. So, and locally between our Cincinnati and Columbus offices, we have about 50 staff members and all the support disciplines to go along with the water and wastewater services that we offer. And Brett can talk a little bit too about some of the local water projects that we've done, just to give you a little bit of flavor, if that's something you're interested in. But just wanted to give that quick introduction and then turn it over to Brett, basically, to talk a little more about your situation and in general, some of the situation with hard water, softening options, and basically, and then I'll jump back in and help him talk about some of the alternative delivery operating methods. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brett.
Thanks, Gary. So an outline of what we're going to talk about. Start off with hard water. And forgive me, I know you've heard a lot about this, so some of this may be things that you've already heard. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the problems associated with hard water and then go over the softening methods, and then as Gary mentioned, some of the alternative delivery options. So what is hard water? And why is it important? Why is softening a consideration? Hard water has high concentrations of calcium, magnesium, salts. Those dissolve from limestone deposits and dolomite magnesium formations. Groundwater, which Yell Springs is served by typically, has higher concentrations of hardness. However, in Ohio, even a lot of surface waters have fairly high hardness. Columbus, where I'm at, softens their surface waters. So it's not uncommon to have high hardness in surface water as well. Carbonate hardness and non-carbonate hardness relates to some of the softening techniques that I'll talk about, but that's basically, the total hardness is a combination of those So with respect to hardness classifications, this figure of the United States shows some of the higher concentrations of hardness, red being the highest, which is considered greater than 200.
I see that.
Yeah. You see a little red spot there.
It's bizarre.
You see some of Ohio right there, which is interesting because Ohio is the roots of softening. Ohio started what we know to be lime softening, the first lime softening plant in North America. Some believe the first limestone softening plant in the world was in Ohio. There was a chemist in the city of Columbus that's kind of the grandfather of softening. So you'll see softening as something that's very common in Ohio. And if you go to our neighbors to the west, Indiana, they don't soften their water. This is an interesting, so.
And they've got a lot of limestone, right? Because of the whole Indiana limestone thing?
Yes, very much so.
And but they don't mind it or what?
Very rare softening in Indiana.
But do they have the same water quality we do?
They just live with hard water. So it's interesting to me that Ohio and your neighbors soften, it's just softening has been part of Ohio drinking water for over 100 years now. So.
And Brett, I think council knows, but the public may not know, that Yell Springs water is like 480.
Yeah, that's, sorry about that.
It's segue.
So approximately 500 parts of hardness in your groundwater. Now for waters that are.
That's kind of off the charts.
Yeah. Well, it's not uncommon for Ohio, to be totally frank. It's off of this chart, but it's not uncommon. And so utilities that soften their water typically will soften it to a hardness of around 100 to 150 milligrams per liter. So four to five times less than the hardness that Yell Springs currently has, just to put that in perspective. So what does this all mean? So why are we talking about the benefits of softening? And you all that live with hard water understand this, that hard water scales piping in appliances. That's probably the number one problem associated with hard water, clogs, appliances and pipes. It's very hard on water heaters. When you heat hard water, the stability, the precipitation goes way up. So when you heat hard water, a lot of that hardness deposits in your water heater. So it's not a coincidence that your hot water heater is kind of the most difficult appliance to deal with.
It's a calcium salt? Is it really like?
It's calcium carbonate deposits.
Okay. But it's not, I thought the word salt was used. Is it salty?
Salt.
It's not, is it?
Salt's a chemical term.
I know it's a chemical term.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Water chemists use salt for any combination of a cadmium and an anion together. So sodium chloride, which is common table salt, is a-salt.
A-salt.
Calcium carbonate is a-salt. Calcium chloride would be a different salt.
Okay. Great. Sorry.
That's fine. And then all the other issues related to, you know, residue on your bathtub, which I know is difficult to clean. I think the last two, though, it really does force your customers, for the most part, to add home softeners. I'm going to talk about some of the downside of having home softeners. And then there's an increase in dependence on bottled water in some communities. Maybe some communities don't find it aesthetically unpleasing to drink hard water, but in general, we do see an increase in dependence on bottled water. And you can see some of the pictures up on the bottom of some of the difficulties with respect to buildup in your piping. Now, just to be clear, when we're talking about hard water, it is not a health issue. It's not a concern to have to drink hard water. At the same time, it's not a negative, I apologize for the double negative there, but there aren't any negative health impacts when you soften the water. So it's, we're not talking about improving public health by softening, and we're not talking about making public health worse when you soften. But I want to focus some on the fact that hard water is significantly more corrosive than soft water. And that's one of the bigger issues with respect to having hard water. So centralized softening, I'm talking about centralized softening, I'm talking about the utility softening of water. And all the methods that I'm going to talk about tonight, except for salt regenerated ion exchange. There's two types of ion exchange that I'm going to talk about, but salt regenerated ion exchange, which I think is the one that you've heard most about. That one aside, all the other methods are going to remove calcium, magnesium, so they're going to soften the water. So it's going to solve the aesthetic problems and it's going to reduce the corrosivity. But that's not true of the salt regenerated ion exchange. So home softeners, which also use salt to regenerate, will only address the scaling issues, the aesthetic issues, the plugging issues, but the water is still corrosive. And this study really did kind of prove this out, proved out what we thought theoretically. So back in 99, this was published in the Journal of the American Bar Works Association, which is our kind of gold standard technical publicator, technical journal that we have. This was done at US EPA. The interesting thing about this study was it was funded by the home softener group to prove that home softeners don't make the water more corrosive, which it proved that. But it also proved that hard water and ion exchange softened water is significantly more corrosive than softened water. So they did a three-year pipe loop study, and they took a soft water, relatively soft water with 160 parts of hardness and a relatively hard water with 300 parts of hardness. And they ran pipe loops for both of these. And then in both of these, they took a stream and they softened it with an ion exchange softener, and they took another pipe loop and they didn't soften it. So you'll see from water A, it's got low hardness, low alkalinity, and on the bottom, we call that DIC, low DIC. So on the hard water, it's relatively hard, high alkalinity, and high DIC.
Also, relatively high pH.
Yes. They ran the two pipe loops. This is just a picture of the pipe loop. What a pipe loop does is it looks at corrosion, so the metal loss in lead, copper, they'd use both copper tubing and copper pipe without solder, the whip without solder, galvanized pipe, and then brass faucets. What it showed was that the, excuse me, the softened water, so that water that had a hardness of 160 parts of hardness, which is water A versus water B, that hard water, whether it was hard water or hard water softened with an ion exchange softener, had a lot higher lead concentration in the water. So the corrosion was significantly higher in that water. That's lead. And copper was actually worse. Copper had a lot higher concentration in that hard water or ion exchange softened So this proved theoretically that hard water was more corrosive than soft water, and that ion exchange softened water is, has the same corrosion as hard water.
So the corrosion means that it's actually dissolving.
Yes, the pipe.
So the copper, the lead is.
Being dissolved into your water. That's right.
Right. And then people are potentially drinking.
Potentially drinking. Now, we have in this country, the US EPA passed the lead and copper rule. The lead and copper rule requires utilities to sample for lead and copper in their distribution system. They go to homes and they sample. And to me, the proof in this is that when you sample, you don't sample in any house that has a home softener, because there's concern that you're going to fail on your lead and copper when you sample in that home. So I think the bottom line here is that this study, which was done to prove that home softeners don't cause corrosion, it's true they don't, but they don't make it any less corrosive. So hard water is corrosive, ion exchange softened water is corrosive.
I thought that the big problem with hard water was that it made deposits in the pipe.
It does.
So if it's making deposits, how is it also taking, dissolving the pipe?
No, it's interesting because the thing that, when you have hard water and you don't soften it with an ion exchange softener, and you're precipitating, so you're causing that deposit, it's probably what's saving you from having corrosion at piping, because it's protecting the pipe. Now, you take that same water and you put it through a home softener, so now it's not going to deposit anymore, but it's still corrosive. So you don't have that protection on the inside of that pipe, and it's corrosive. That's when you're going to have problems.
Oh, interesting.
How in this study, because I don't know the actual article, how in this study did they control for pH? Because the pHs are also very significantly different between those two waters.
They did control for pH.
So the corrosion issue could do as much pH as the hardness of the water.
It could. It could. But as you know, I'm not going to tell you the corrosion, you know, we're talking about alkalinity and DIC and pH.
pH.
So those are the three factors. So in order to reduce corrosion, we've got to lower alkalinity and lower DIC. So that kind of plays into what options should you consider from a water treatment perspective that will do that? And just a final thought on this, is coupon tests are a way that you measure real-time corrosion. And so you put these coupons out in your distribution system and you can test for corrosion. And this was some data that we collected when I worked for another firm. We designed a water plant for Delphus, Ohio. And I'll talk a little bit about that later as well. But you can see, the left is a non-softened groundwater supply. The right is after they put their softening plant online. And these are the corrosion rates that they saw for lead versus, you know, when they started to plant, so corrosion significantly dropped. Both before and after they started a new plant, they were using an orthopoliphosphate blend, which helps reduce that corrosion. So as John mentioned, we changed the alkalinity, hardness, and the pH of the water, and the corrosion went down significantly.
What's the orthopoly blend? Is that in the water or the pipes?
It's in the water. And it's a corrosion inhibitor. It's a chemical that you add to the water to help prevent corrosion of your piping.
And it does not have adverse health effects?
No, it does not.
It's a sequestrant agent.
Yep.
All right.
It's a sequestrant.
Sequestrant agent is another name.
Yes. So a lot of communities add an orthophosphate or a polyphosphate blend as a corrosion inhibitor.
Springfield does that, for example. It's one of the things that was in what they described about their water treatment process.
Most utilities do, because when the lead and copper requirements came out, there's a whole lot of competing water quality requirements, and it's hard for a utility to meet all these requirements at the same time. You can't raise the pH if you're a surface water, because that creates issues. And so a lot of utilities have dropped the pH, which then requires them to put in orthophosphate, polyphosphate blend to help limit that corrosion. But again, it's to protect the piping from corrosion, because obviously, we don't want lead and copper in our drinking water.
Complicated.
And then these are the results from the copper coupons. Same results. And again, you know, it's, and then steel coupons. Across the board, the corrosion went down. I think it's important to look at whether it's the theoretical, which I didn't show those theoretical slides, but the theoretical and the pipe loops and the coupon tests all line up that when you have a hard water with high alkalinity and high DIC, it's corrosive. That's the bottom line. And there's not much you can do about it, except for reducing the alkalinity and reducing the DIC. So lastly, I want to talk about the benefits to the environment, because centralized softening has some significant benefits to the environment. Home softeners contribute very large amounts of TDS, total dissolved solids, in the form of sodium and chlorides to the sewer system. And then therefore, the receiving stream, because the wastewater plant can't remove TDS, it just passes on through. And these are, these are very much a concern right now for EPA. Those of you who are, if you live in the cave, not to know the impact that fracking has had, in particular on Ohio. And as a result of the fracking activities, Ohio EPA is very much considering reducing the in-stream TDS requirements. So TDS is a concern, specifically chlorides on receiving streams. And home softeners have a huge impact on that. So just for example, in Yell Springs, about two-thirds of your customers have home softeners. If you do the math, assuming three bags of salt a month, it may be two, it may be four, but three's probably the right average. That's 72 tons of salt per month that's discharged to your sewer system. And therefore, the receiving.
Little Miami.
Yeah.
Yellow Springs Creek.
Yellow Springs Creek.
Into, well, into Little.
Yeah.
Yep.
Through the Glen.
And then into the Little Miami.
So that's as much as 400 to 500 milligrams per liter of chlorides going into the receiving Sodium, I saw your Q and A with Ohio EPA, looks like your drinking water sodium is about 12 milligrams per liter. The wastewater treatment that flowed is about 90 milligrams per liter. That's entirely home softening. There's.
Right. No other.
There's no other source. I mean, some communities see a spike with road salt in the wintertime, but there's no other source.
Business softening too.
Right.
Businesses that have oilers would definitely soften.
Yep.
Sure.
Actually, when you calculate it, it probably should be higher. So I'm assuming your body, I'm not a doctor, but I'm assuming your body absorbs some of that sodium, but it theoretically would be higher than that. So the point is, home softening increases both chlorides and sodium in your receiving streams.
Or onsite softening. I mean, because the commercial places probably are using the same kind of.
Yeah. Yeah, well, some use membranes, I don't know.
I think everybody in Yell Springs that does softening uses ion exchange.
The brewery uses it.
Only for their brew water.
Yeah. Not for their other water.
Right.
So.
Brew water is the biggest part.
What goes through their heat exchanger is a much larger volume of water than what goes into the brew.
So to the home user, the resident, the cost of this water, when you figure out the cost for water, it's the utility charge that you're paying for the village, plus the cost of them treating their water. So the cost to own and operate a home softener. And as I said, two-thirds of your customers have installed home softeners. So how much does that cost? If you break this down. And again, these numbers are averages, I know that I gave this presentation at one council meeting, and they argued with me about the cost of a bag of salt. It's just.
Yeah. Sounds like Yell Springs.
So assuming the cost of a home softener is in that $1,000 to $2,000 range, you add the cost of the salt, again, two to four bags a month, it comes out to about $18 to $32 a month, depending on the cost of your home softener and how much salt you use to own and operate a home softener. So that's in addition to what they're already paying the village. So as I mentioned, Delphus, this is a good example of a community who had very hard water converted to, actually, their water was so bad, their groundwater was so bad, they abandoned it and went to surface water, which is an extreme step. So this was total construction of the whole project was about 17 and a half million dollars. But the water plant portion of that, because that whole project included a lot of other things beyond the water plant. The water plant was about 12 and a half million dollars. And this is for a community of about 7,000 people, a little bit bigger than Yell Springs. So when you break it all down and you look at the increase in debt service, the construction and O and M, the total cost to the customer to do that project is about $22 a month. Now, the water plant portion of that was only $16 a month. So 16 to $20 a month in that range. So if you look at that compared to what you're paying to operate your home softener, the reality is, you go to Delphus now, hopefully, most of those people have home softeners, got rid of them. Or at least they've greatly reduced the amount of regeneration that went in, because now they've got soft water. So the moral of the story here is that it's going to cost less for the utility to soften the water, and the water quality is going to be significantly better than what the home, than what the home softening, home ion exchange can provide.
Do you have any numbers on maintenance, on what it does for the infrastructure, not having that corrosion and the long-term strain of the hardness?
It's all going to be better, you know, but I don't have any numbers on how much that's going to save long-term. But, you know, even when you don't factor that into it, it's costing the individual homeowner less money than it would if they took that hard water and softened it. So it's going to cost them less money, it's better water quality, and it's significantly better for the environment. So it's kind of like, it's hard to find a negative for centralized softener.
The conveyance, protection, icing on the cake.
Right.
Yep.
And but you're talking, that was a lime plant?
Yes. Which actually, this is a lime softening plant of a surface water. So this is a much more extreme case than we're talking about here, because surface water treatment requires a whole new set of issues that you don't have to deal with here.
Right.
So this is much more extreme than the situation you have here. So the cost savings for the home customer would be much higher.
Well, the whole environmental issue is why we were ever considering Springfield water in the first place. So that seems to have gotten lost in translation over the couple of years we've been talking about it, but that was really the reason.
Right. So and then we'll move into some of the options that we're going to consider for softening. So again, even for the customers who don't have a home softener, right, because there are, a third of your customers don't, for whatever reason, they choose not to soften. But it has some significant benefits to them, longer life on the hot water tanks, coffee makers, makes your coffee taste a lot better. Delphus was so bad that the homeowners would rent their hot water heaters, because they would only last about a year or two, because they had another, they had hydrogen sulfide in the water. So you take this water, hard water, and you heat it up, and you create it, I think it was a, some sort of a sulfuric acid.
Wow.
It was bad. It was bad.
Wow.
So again, the moral of the story, customer, customer cost is less, water quality's better, and the impact in the environment is much better with centralized softening. So we'll talk a little bit about some of the methods of softening. Chemical precipitation is kind of the generic term for lime soda ash softening. Membrane softening has gotten a lot of play here of late, especially in groundwater in Ohio. There's a lot of utilities that use membranes. And then ion exchange, and there's two types that I'll talk about, the zealite softening, which is the salt regeneration, which is just like you take your home softener and you blew it up into a plant-wide system. And then a weak acid cadmium, which uses hydrochloric acid to regenerate the media. So lime softening, again, it's been around for a long time, it's proven, it uses the least amount of water of all the technologies we're going to talk about. It's very efficient for groundwater. It may be close to 100% efficient, which means that you're just not going to waste a lot of water with lime softening. The sludge has a significant beneficial reuse. Farmers love this, it's close to an agricultural line for pH amendment to soil. You've got the benefit in this location of having Dayton, which has their own recalcination facility at their water plant. There's only two utilities in the country who recalcine their line. It's Dayton, it's Miami of Florida. So you're within a stone's throw of the city of Dayton. So if you go down the road of lime softening, you've got a place that will take your line, put it through their furnace, and give you your line back. So it's really kind of closing that loop. And there's no issues related to discharge permits. And far and away, of any of the technologies we're going to talk about, it's the most environmentally friendly. It's not even close. Downside is it's generally higher cost from a capital perspective, from an operations and maintenance perspective. You've got to deal with sludge. It's not as modular, so it's not as easy to, like with ion exchange, you can just add more exchange, or with membranes, you can just add more membrane skids. It's not quite that easy with lime softening.
Is it just basically a tank? I mean, is it the size of a tank? Is that what?
That's a clarification unit, shown up there in the operating quarter. Yeah, you've got a tank. Usually, you call these solids contact clarifiers, where you're adding lime to the water and the sludge settling out.
Probably two. Do they have two of them?
You have to have two.
Yeah.
You have to have two.
She got two of those.
If they're one duty, one stand.
Okay.
But also means that incrementally, what you're saying about expansion, is that if you have two, is the minimum required for a plant, the next increment of expansion is one more whole unit.
Right.
And so you're increasing the capacity by 50%. You can't do it in smaller, it's really not useful doing smaller increments.
Right. It's much, especially for a plant this size, that's why a lot of communities have gone with ion exchange traditionally, and lately, membranes, because it's much more modular. You can just tack on more units. Membrane softening, you know, probably for the last 15 or 20 years, it's really become very popular, especially for. especially for groundwater softening. It's very modular. For groundwater, the capital cost is less than lime softening. Disadvantage is that it uses a lot more water, so... So you're going to take your groundwater and you're going to put some percentage of that through the membrane, depending on what you want, because it's going to remove all the hardness. So you're not going to take all the water through there. You don't want a water with zero hardness. So some percentage of that flow is going to go through your membrane. And of that percentage, 20% of that water gets rejected with the discharge. So you have 20% waste through that membrane unit.
Where does it go?
We got to discharge it. You've got to get rid of it. That's that last bullet. It's got a little higher TDS than, and then usually you can discharge it to your wastewater plant, which then goes to your receiving stream, or directly to a receiving stream. The problem has become, as EPA has gotten more concerned about TDS, it's become more difficult to discharge that. There's a community in Marysville, which is close to Columbus, is really struggling with discharging that. They've looked at deep well injection. They've looked at all sorts of ways to get rid of it, so.
Brett, one other thing, both the lime softening and membrane softening, is the impact of iron and manganese. With lime softening, you take out the iron and manganese inherently in the process. You don't have to do anything extra.
Nope.
With membrane softening, at least, your bypass stream that puts leaves some residual hardness has to be independently treated for iron and manganese.
And usually, the pretreatment for membranes would require pretreatment for iron removal, because you either have to remove it or sequester it so it passes through. Because iron will follow membranes. So iron is a particular thing that we've got to worry about with membranes. Now, ion exchange, so this is salt regenerate, so this is just like your home softener. The nice thing that I can say about ion exchange is going to be the least cost option. The problem is...
From capital and O and M?
Capital and O and M, yeah. Least cost. The problem is, as we talked, it doesn't, it doesn't lower the alkalinity. It doesn't remove TDS. So therefore, it's still a corrosive water. The waste stream from an ion exchange softening plant is extremely high. It is on the order of seawater in terms of TDS. Ohio EPA has, it's going to be almost impossible for you to get a discharge permit to discharge the waste stream from an ion exchange softener. Because of this whole fracking issue, they're just not going to be able to issue a permit. It's going to be very, very, very difficult to put in a new ion exchange softener. They want them all to go away.
But can we just charge it into the wastewater treatment plant, but that, I mean, then it's still going to go into the waste stream?
It doesn't.
Yeah.
What does it mean, potentially new options that reduce salt usage?
They've got some more efficient, Talca has a new system that minimizes the amount of salt. I can't remember the name of the product, but there are more efficient versions of... I mean, the ion exchange guys aren't going to go away. They're going to try to come up with a new mousetrap to make this work. The city of Pickerington, which is a suburb of Columbus, they were in TDS violation at their wastewater plant because of their ion exchange plant, which forced them to put in a membrane plant. So, I mean, right now, we don't have a lot of wastewater utilities that have a TDS limit. But that's going to change. That's going to change. And so a lot of people who have an ion exchange plant are going to have a struggle with meeting a TDS limit.
Brett, I'm going to stop. We're going to, we'll go five more minutes. So we'll go to five after seven. So you've got 15 more minutes. I just don't, I want you to...
Nope, no. So then the last option is this weak acid cat ion. It's an interesting option. We don't see a lot, well, we don't see any of it in Ohio. It's rare in Ohio. I think because ion exchange softening was so common, this was not considered an option. You know, it's got some advantages. It's going to be higher capital cost, well, mainly higher O and M cost than in the ion exchange, because you're using hydrochloric acid instead of salt. And you've got, you have to deal with hydrochloric acid, which is, some utilities would not want to deal with hydrochloric acid. But it's very similar in operation to ion exchange softening plant. And it has the benefit of, it does lower alkalinity and TDS. So it's kind of like ion exchange, better water quality, and much more similar to ion exchange in operation. We're about ready to pilot this in Englewood, Ohio, just down the road. They just went through an identical study as you went through, or are going through, to look at, what should we do? How should we soften our water? And we presented them with all the options. They liked this option to the extent that they want to pilot this.
And they don't have a current softener?
No, they do not soften.
Is the elevated chloride issue?
That's one of the things we need to nail down in our pilot, to really get a handle on what the chloride level is going to be. Because you're regenerating with hydrochloric acid, so there is a chloride component to that. It's not as bad as ion exchange, but it still could be something that we need to determine if that's going to be hard to discharge.
Is this groundwater or...
Yes.
Back on the question about the ion exchange plant. I mean, is there a negotiation with O EPA from, you know, what our customers are discharging already to what this plant would discharge?
No, and that's unfortunately, I mean, you know, that's, it's good information for Ohio EPA to say, well, if we soften, even if we do ion exchange softening, we're going to be more efficient at it, and therefore, the total TDS load to the receiving stream is going to go down. And that's true. Eventually, Ohio EPA is going to set a limit on the in-stream levels for TDS, and you're going to have to meet it. So, now they don't know where that's going to go. They've been talking about this for probably four years now, three, four years, when the fracking thing took off. They've talked about cutting TDS limits in half.
What's the current?
It's currently 1,500. They've thrown around the number seven to eight hundred.
What did you say ours is right now?
Well, just the component associated with, just if you look at home softeners, the salt from those home softeners probably contributes about 900 milligrams per liter.
That's not regulated by your N P D S district from your wastewater plants. This is, it's there, but it's, Brett's talking about what comes out of your wastewater plant that EPA is going to be getting.
Right, and I don't know what your TDS is, TDS is on your wastewater plant.
Oh, right, right.
But it's relatively high.
But it's something you don't, you can monitor.
You wouldn't monitor it right now because you're not...
Right. We're not required to.
And again, this is something that's kind of just evolving, you know, from last year or so.
Okay.
So in summary, lime softening is clearly hands-down the most green approach, but it's going to have the highest capital and O and M costs. There are utilities, small utilities, that have lime softening plants. So it's unheard of. But I think in the last thirty or forty years, a lot of utilities have moved towards ion exchange softening and then most recently membrane softening, because of some of the O and M costs associated with lime softening. Membrane softening has potentially lower capital costs than lime softening, but higher water loss. And it's more operationally complex than a lime softening plant or most definitely an ion exchange plant. And again, ion exchange, least cost, very, very, if not impossible, to permit that discharge. We've been told by central district, don't try. And then weak acid cat ion, again, higher O and M costs, better water quality, easier to permit than the ion exchange with salt. So just quickly on some of the alternative delivery issues. So we've got the traditional delivery, which is the method that we're all familiar with, the design, bid, build method. And then alternative delivery, two methods that are common are the construction manager at risk, C Mar, and then design and build. Traditional design, bid, build, the owner will have two contracts, one with the engineer and one with the contractor. Now, this has changed recently, when Ohio got rid of the requirement for multiple prime contracts. So especially for small utilities, small municipalities who were not chartered, they had to follow the Ohio Revised Code, which required you to have multiple prime contracts. That's gone now. So that's made this method much simpler, because in a multiple prime contract, you'd have a contract with the general, the electrical plumbing contractor, which made it difficult. That's gone, so you're just...
Ohio was one of the last states to hang on to that.
Thank you. That's gone now. So some of the pluses and minuses of this traditional design bid build. It's well-established, legal precedent, typically has the lowest initial cost. And most importantly, I think you have the most opportunity to provide input and review irrespective. Downside is, you've got this contract with the engineer and the contractor. And you're dealing with contractor selection, which is typically low bid, which gives you less ability to pick your contractor on qualifications.
Now, on that point, we do, in our bid documents, put in minimum experience requirements for the contractors who are going to bid on it. So, you know, again, there's still a little control, you know, on who you end up with, but in theory, all the contractors that submit bids have to be qualified.
So with respect to the alternative delivery methods, construction management at risk, just kind of in between the conventional design, bid, build, and design and build. You've got the design engineer, the owner hires a CM contractor at some point during a project who assists with finalizing the design with respect to constructability and construction cost estimating and things of that nature. And then they issue these competitive bid packages. So again, you're still going to have two contracts, one with the design engineer and one with the CM contractor. Some of the pluses and minuses of this. There's a little, there's more owner control in this than there is in design build.
But less than traditional.
But less than traditional design bid build. You've got some methods of early cost identification. The selection of the CM, the construction manager, is qualifications-based, so it's not a low bid situation. And there's less of a need, although that doesn't entirely go away, to hire a bridging consultant to assist with that, bridging the gap between the design engineer and the CM contractor. The downside is, the owner's still responsible for the design. Construction cost is not known upfront. And then the owner still has two contracts, one with the designer, one with the contractor. So then you have the design build option, where the owner has one contract with the design build team. And in that design build team, there's an engineer and there's the contractor. Except you'll often have an additional contract with the bridging consultant.
I...
Bridging consultant's important, because they're the one that establishes the design criteria for projects. In particular, when you're talking about a treatment plant. This is, this is not a sewer line going from point A to point B. This is a complex facility. So alternative delivery methods become a little more complicated when you're talking about a treatment plant or other complex facilities. It's not like a pipe in the ground or a school building or something like that. Now, it can be done. It just adds some layers of complexity. So it's important that that bridging consultant basically is your design criteria.
That's a 10 to 30% design. It's kind of a preliminary design that they establish.
Ah, so why is it, I guess I don't understand why there is less owner control of this, in this process?
Well, there's, in a conventional design build, they're going to quote the price at the beginning based on their understanding of these 10 to 30% design documents. So you're going to get, in this case, a water plant that functions and meets your needs, but the type of equipment you get, pump manufacturer, you get, all those things that may improve your operations and maintenance and may cost a little bit more money, it's more difficult for you to get that, because they're trying to meet their price.
In a situation like this, the design build team is, they're going to want to build it as cheap as possible, basically. So, and the bridging consultant puts in some of those minimum criteria, but when you're only taking it to 30%, there's no way you're going to catch every detail. So it leaves more up to the imagination of the design build team in that sense.
A real, real simple example could be if that bridging consultant doesn't specify the life of or type of a roof, like an asphalt shingle with a 40-year life, you might get an asphalt shingle roof with a 20-year life.
But you also get inadequate documents from engineers all the time, and there are change orders all the time in conventional projects.
Sure.
So, I mean, there is no guarantee in a conventional project that it's, that you're not going to have the same problem.
But the key point here is treatment plants versus other types of infrastructure projects. And I mean, that's the only point we wanted to make, is it is a little more complicated when it's a treatment plant.
But you're right. It doesn't eliminate...
Cost over...
Change orders don't go away with conventional design.
Another example with the bridging consultant, somehow, if you build a new plant, you're going to have to decide on a design size. You know, is it going to be a 1 million gallon per day plan, or 1.5, or 1.2? Or somehow, that decision's got to get made, and who's going to assist you with that decision? Are you going to make the decision, is it going to be lime softening? How do you make, how do you work through those kinds of initial decisions that are critical before the document goes out to hire the design build team?
Does the consultant, the bridging consultant, does that person oversee the process all the way through to make sure that what we said we want, we're getting?
I mean, the owner could have them involved during...
Kind of as an owner's agent.
Right. I mean, we don't have that in-house expertise.
Yeah, and they can, but they don't have much leverage. It's whatever goes out on the street to the design build team, that's what you're going to get. So they can bring stuff and make you, as the owner, aware, hey, I think they're going to fall short in this area. And then you can figure out how you want to deal with it. But you're kind of stuck with whatever gets put out to that design.
And so the consultant does this 10 to 30% of the design. We put it out for bids, I guess. We decide that the build team. Then, when we get the design that they submit, does that only include that 20 to 30% of the design? Or does the design we get at the beginning include everything?
The design build team has to basically finish the design. They're taking that 10 to 30% set of drawings.
As a sort of skeleton.
Yeah. It's kind of a preliminary design framework for them to work within, but they have to finish the design and they complete the construction.
They have to finish documents enough to be able to submit to EPA to get a permit.
To get a permit, that's right.
And if you have building permits or anything like that. So it has to be far enough. They, like Brett said, the design build team has an engineer on board to finish the design documents.
So the reason we're considering design build is because we're really under the gun on our plant. O EPA is very concerned. We are in a quasi-emergency situation, so we need to move forward quickly. It's our view that it will go faster, that if we do design build, that it will expedite the process. Is that, would you agree with that?
Can.
Yeah, it can. That's one of the probably primary benefits of design build. You talk about, I mean, some folks will say that design build will save money, save time, and improve quality. You can't do all three. That's not possible. But one of the things it can do is save time. Now, you give up some of that control.
So I think another thing is that that 10 to 30%... See, I think another thing is that, that 10 to 30 percent design, those bridging documents, that sets the framework for the design. If, then what you see coming back to you from the design build team, you say, really, I'd really rather a higher quality X, you know, whatever this is than what you've got in, and they say back to you, yes, but we met your criteria, so if you want, that's a change order then, essentially. So you get change orders that way because you now are seeing what the design build team is actually doing to meet the original specifications, but it's like, oh, wait a minute, I really don't want that after all, I want this other, and now you've got a change order.
You have no way to negotiate the price because you're, you're.
You know, some folks, when it comes to treatment plants, they promote a DBO, design build operate, because if the design build contractor is forced to operate it, they're going to put a lot more effort into making sure that plant is built properly and meets all the criteria. Again, it can, it can be done to put all those constraints in there, but you have, you better have some, your bridging consultant really has to do due diligence and make sure, working with Joe Bates and all of you, to make sure that you're going to get, you know, what you want. Like Johnny said, you know, it has a higher probability of saving time, it doesn't necessarily going to save money, though.
So what would the typical period of design, let's say we go traditional, how long does it take to do construction documents?
It's, it's highly variable, depending on the type of project. It would depend, in this case, the first point is what type of softening plant would you want to go with? And so, doing a quick study to figure that out, and then starting to put the bid documents together. But I mean, you know, a new plant is, is actually easier to put together bid documents. A lot of the work we do is rehab of existing plants, and that can take a long time because you're trying to figure out what you can save, what you can't, what can be fixed, what can't, versus a new plant, as you just say, here it is, so it's a lot more streamlined. I mean, I'd be happy to come back to you with a firm answer on that, but I mean.
I mean, it's, I've done a brand-new 20-MG plant, start to finish nine months for design, but that's a, that was a huge project.
I mean, I think we could do, you could do, you could get a firm do it quicker than that, for sure.
Yeah.
And part of the, part of the hesitation is because of getting the permitting done, too. So that's, but.
Now, there's another variation on design build, which is, sorry, is even more.
Yeah, we're past the time limit.
Yeah, we're way past, yeah.
This is progressive design build, which is very similar, it just gives you a little more leverage, but it has some downsides and some upsides as well.
Why don't you just scroll through these prior?
Yeah, so, so there's a single point of responsibility again, but, but you don't, you really don't have that fixed price at the beginning. Well, this is, okay, so this is the lump sum design build, and then, and then you have the progressive design build, which, you know, you don't have that fixed price at the beginning, and it does require some sort of an off-ramp if the negotiations fail, the design building. So, so there's, you know, another option to consider versus conventional design build.
We've, we've been involved in just about every conceivable role in these types of projects. We've been the design engineer on traditional projects, we've been a bridging consultant on design build, we've been, we've been a partner to contractors on design build. So we don't, to us, I mean, you will find some folks trying to promote one method versus the other, it doesn't, I mean, it's, it's really up to you, and that's, our job here today was really just to talk about pros and cons. We'd be happy to follow up, which would be more as needed, you know, as you move forward through this process.
I think the key I want to leave you with is there's no perfect solution. There's no, especially on the delivery method, there's really not a right or wrong answer. Either one can succeed and either one can fail.
Given what you know about Yellow Springs, would you make a recommendation, just, both about softening?
I don't know that we know enough, I would say. I mean, you're saying schedule's a huge driver, I'd want to talk to the regulators, I think, ourselves before we.
The only recommendation I would make is I would take high-end exchange softening off the table for consideration, and I would only include it as a, as a cost comparison to the other options, but I think it's very short-sighted, given our current regulatory environment, to go down that road. That's the only recommendation I would make. The other options, softening options will work in any of the delivery methods.
Brett, one, one thing I would recommend, or say, there is one bad delivery method, and that's to go into design build without having somebody at your side, to go into design build naively.
Right.
That would be a bad delivery option.
I think, and again, I go back to the regulatory aspect. We've had a lot of, we have a long history and tremendous relationship with a lot of the folks at Ohio EPA. I mean, we've helped a lot of communities negotiate through this process, and I realize, you know, it's to some degree under the gun, but I think if they know you're working toward a solution, you have somebody on board, there's going to be leeway there.
We met with them the other day, and I mean, they're obviously as anxious to work with us as quickly as they know what our issues are, so I think that they will work with whoever we work with.
And, and they would probably be accepting of whatever delivery method you decided to go with.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you a lot. Or do you want, did you have one?
Um, this is mine, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, that one's yours.
I have one somewhere.
I know.
I have one.
Welcome, everyone, we've actually called the meeting to order already, we just had about an hour presentation from some consultants about the water plant, and the next order of business is to swear in our new village manager. Hi.
Hi, Patty Bates.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter ordinances.
Of the charter ordinances.
Of the Village of Yellow Springs.
Of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village manager.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village manager.
Welcome, congratulations. Thank you. Ken is here, Ken's looking very relaxed, so he'll, he'll be, he'll be here tonight to help Patty bridge, and he'll be working with her as things go along, answering questions, so.
Patty appreciates it.
She did have her first full day today, so I think it was a very, a very good day for her. Announcements, I want to first start out with just a quick announcement. Citizen participation at council meetings is important, so we need to minimize noise, distractions, and interruptions. To that end, please turn off your cell phones and refrain from talking or making other noises that could disrupt the meeting. And remember, if you leave the room early, please remain quiet as you're exiting and while you're in the hallway, so as not to disrupt the meeting. The aisles and council chambers must be kept clear, and you may not sit on the floor. We were thinking we might have an overflow audience tonight, it doesn't look like we're going to, is A and B, A and B is set up, if we start to get an overflow audience, people can move in there. We do invite public participation, but only at prescribed times in the agenda and after being acknowledged by the chair. If you wish to speak about something that is on the agenda, you can do it at that time. If you wish to speak about something that is not on the agenda, you can do that during citizens' concerns. You come to the microphone after you're recognized by the chair, come to the microphone, state your name, and keep your comments to under three minutes. New speakers will be recognized before someone who has already spoken, and if the comments become too extensive, we may choose, choose to hear only one comment per person. And thanks for your participation in the public process. Any other announcements?
Yeah, I have a few. First of all, I want to thank the Odd Fellows for an amazing fireworks show on Friday, as well as the YS Community Band for the wonderful patriotic music. I also wanted to mention, and this was a late piece that I think is on the table, the NAMI Mobile, which is the, let me make sure I get it right, the National Alliance on Mental Illness is coming down from Columbus on July 22nd, from 11:00 to 12:30. It'll be in the BP parking lot, and their mission is basically to fight discrimination. We're really excited about the two NAMI chapters that have started here in Yellow Springs that have been helping a lot of citizens, and you may have seen recently the Harmony Rain Barrel Project, which was basically a seed money project that allowed that group to raise a lot more money to get things started. And the last thing, I thought it would be good to follow up on the Bryan Youth Center, which was an issue that came earlier in the year, and I just got this note before the meeting. They said, "The Bryan Youth Center youth room is continuing to provide the community of Yellow Springs, a place where children age 11 and up can spend time in a safe, creative, monitored space. The room has recently been repainted, the television replaced, the pool table rehabbed, and a ping pong table added. The community and youth collaborative of Yellow Springs will continue to support the youth room and work with the village to improve the space and service available. Thank you so very much for your support." And I'm very excited that all these things happened, a lot of that because of a village team working together with citizens to, to improve that space.
And I have one, you'll notice if, if you keep us here past 10, that we have upgraded our parking lot lighting, not only for us, but those that use the facilities and once it gets dark and so forth. So like I say, if we're here for an extended period of time, it will be much easier for you to, to get to your vehicles, plus walking around. So I want to thank Johnny and his staff for getting those lights up for us.
I'd like to just thank everyone who helped out with the parade. I don't even know if there are one entity that sort of.
The Odd Fellows.
The Odd Fellows do the parade, too? Well, I don't know, probably a lot of you were either in the parade or, or watched it, and I think it is one of the most wonderful community events. I mean, it's like small town, and anyone can be in it, and I encourage anyone next year who'd like to start a group and be in it to do it, it's very, it's very fun. And it's, unlike the fireworks, it doesn't attract so many out-of-town people, so you can actually come and sit down, and it's a little bit easier to enjoy. So thanks to everyone and the Odd Fellows.
I think the fireworks were quite easy to enjoy, and I actually think that the Lions Club is kind of the head of the fireworks. They, they deserve some, some credit and recognition for the fireworks also, in addition to the Odd Fellows. They sponsor, I think they're the fiscal sponsors. Anything else? Okay, moving on to the minutes, June 2nd, minutes, page one, page two, page three, four, five, six, seven.
There are a couple typos on seven, the second line in the middle, it should be one, and it says with a separation, determinate, determination one way or the other, and under mosquito mitigation project, second line, there's an A between successful and manner that I think doesn't need to be there, and on the fourth line up from the bottom near the end, is occasions, I think occasions is misspelled, though my spelling's not so bad, not so, occasions is spelled correctly and mine, okay.
Page eight.
And on eight, the first line, near the end of the first line, I think it's supposed to be and, maybe the availability, and, and it's a missing.
Page nine, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hepsy.
On to the minutes of June 16th, page one, page two, three, four, five, six.
On six, the fourth line notified her of, I think she probably did their presence, maybe? Says, notified of her presence, yeah.
When we've got typos, let's just send them to Judy.
Okay. Beforehand?
Yeah, beforehand, or if you, yeah, I mean, if you've seen them in the minutes.
Or afterwards.
Yeah, or after. Okay.
Unless there's a question about meaning or confusion.
I'll do that, okay, okay, that's all right.
Page seven, page eight, page nine, motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Review of the agenda, is there anything that we need to add or change? We do have one additional piece of legislation, it's Resolution 2014-34, what is it, Judy?
Uh, it's actually 2014.
35, I'm sorry, yeah.
Giving the village manager approval to apply for an OPWC grant.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then, under new business, I just, we had talked about last time, considering the approval of a new public art commission member.
Lori, did you want to review the petitions and communications?
There's a couple things, there's a lot of interesting programming going on at the library, and the Miami Conservancy alerted us to a watershed meeting between the Dayton Water Roundtable and the Great Miami Watershed Network, it's a little west of us, but they are talking about collaborative opportunities in the water economy, and also presumably about conservation. So some people might be interested in what's going on with the water, and are, both as an economic opportunity, but also as something that needs to be protected. Taki Menelakis sent us a letter about the CBE opposing village funding and time spent on the project. Thomas Watkins sent us a note regarding the mowing ordinance, expressing concerns about a non-mowing neighbor and the attraction of skunks, et cetera, to that area. Kay Ramers sent us a letter concerned about funding for nonprofits and concerned that she doesn't see a good process for determining which organizations receive village funding.
Can we comment on?
Yeah, if you, go ahead.
I'd like to comment on that letter. Because I'm concerned that the misinformation that she has in this letter might, might, other people might have it. So Kay had indicated that the village has subsidized one nonprofit, Home Inc., and has not subsidized others. As far as I know, the village has not subsidized any nonprofit, subsidized would be giving money for operation of the organization. But the village has partnered with a number of nonprofits, I believe, Tecumseh Land Trust in preserving green space, Community Resources in buying the property for the Center for Business and Education, The Chamber, I think, isn't there partnerships between the?
Right, well, yeah, in mind, we're a member.
Recently, the village just gave a grant to GEC for a mosquito project with Antioch College. So I think this is not subsidy, this is really putting money in joint projects. But the other thing that Kay mentions, which I think is important, is I think there, the council developed a policy. developed a policy. And I think it's important that that policy be understood. And my understanding is it's that if a nonprofit has a project in align with the village goal or a village project-
Right.
-that that's a potential for partnership, but that the village does not subsidize as in provide operating support.
Right. I mean, that is absolute policy, that we do not, we do not provide operating support. A project that is within one of our goals, and that typically that we wouldn't have the capacity to do ourselves, then that, that is very often what we will look to projects. And I think, I think for the, for the Home Inc. and Community Resources specifically, those are really economic development projects. What we're doing with both of those organizations is investing in infrastructure. That's what we are talking, and that's what we've done with, with Home Inc., is specifically invest in, in tap fee, or waiving tap fees which, for new users. So we're actually investing in getting new users and new taxpayers in town when we, when we work on those projects. So it's very different.
Right. And they were done through all public processes. The Home Inc. process was on RFQ, a request for qualifications, which is what we'll do also with the for-profit firms, presumably, that will be applying to build our water plant for us. We don't have the capacity, so we send out a request and say, "Who can build this water plant for us? And why are you qualified to do it?" Well, we did the same thing with Home Inc. We said, "We would like to do this project. Who can do it?" Home Inc. responded. Their, their, their response was vetted, and it was, and all was done in public meetings. Similarly, if nonprofits have an idea that they think is worthy of our attention, we developed a form-
Right.
...that they can fill out and bring to council, so that we can consider it in public meetings. So we can come up with an idea and say, "Who can help us do this idea?" Or a nonprofit can come up with an idea and say, "We think this is a place where collaboration could be beneficial."
And, and I would say that process would be to go through the clerk to ask for that, is that?
It's actually the village manager-
Okay.
-who holds the form-
Okay.
...and starts that process.
Thank you.
All right. Ryan Ireland wrote about the library levy that will be on the ballot this fall. It was voted unanimously by the Green County Commissioners. And so I'm sure you'll be hearing a lot more about that as we come to election time. There were two documents in the packet from Community Resources that we will be talking about when we turn to the question about CBE. It was the plan, their plan and their marketing, some of their marketing plans for the development. Yellow Springs for Sustainable Development notified us that a group has retained legal counsel and plans to bring a referendum on the CBE if council passes the ordinance this evening. Ben Van Oostal wrote about a soccer tournament at, is it Beth? Was it Beth, or Ben?
Ben.
Oh, it was Ben. In my, in my memory, I remember, I thought I remembered saying Beth, sorry. Ben Van Oostal, soccer tournament, July 18th through 20th, asking for sponsorship. Charles-
Can I speak to that real quick?
Please.
This is going to be a big and a new event for, for Yellow Springs as, as a small community. We're going to have approximately 30 schools from around the state, approximately 500 soccer players, and then additional parents and so forth. The soccer team will be coming around soliciting sponsorship from either businesses or individuals. And our goal, and the way Ben has scheduled the tournament, he has staggered the game, so if a team played in the morning, they would not play till late afternoon. And the idea is to give them an opportunity to come into town and to see what Yellow Springs is all about, and enjoy some of the activities and the food and so forth from, from our merchants. So it's, we're looking at it as both an athletic and a fellowship event for the athletes and for their parents and so forth to, to see Yellow Springs. So I encourage all of you to come out, and if you want to get more information or want to be a sponsor, you can contact Ben, see him at BP, or those of us that are involved will be around. But I think it'll be an enjoyable three days for all of us.
Thanks, Jerry.
And then finally, Charles Bell wrote in about roads and sidewalks. He would like more money for sidewalks and new sidewalks in places like Limestone Street.
Thanks, Lori. Moving on to public hearings and legislation, we have, first on the agenda, second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2014-16 declaring the intent of council to proceed with development of the CBE.
Okay. Do you want this in its entirety?
Yes, please.
Determining to proceed with the Center for Business and Education Public Improvement Project and authorizing the village manager to retain bond counsel and solicit bids from contractors. Whereas the village council has determined that there is good cause for proceeding with the development known as the Center for Business and Education CBE Public Improvement Project. Whereas the CBE Public Improvement Project requires the use of public funds for the construction and extension of public roads and streets, including, including the necessary stormwater, sanitary sewer and water facilities, traffic signals, and other necessary appurtenances and to solicit bids for this project. And whereas in order to proceed with the CBE Public Improvement Project, the village will need to issue bonds and solicit bids from contractors. And whereas this ordinance is being passed pursuant to Section 70 of the Charter of Yellow Springs that creates the right of referendum for measures pertaining to ordinances determining to proceed on public improvements, now therefore the council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, Green County hereby ordains that. Section 1, the council of the Village of Yellow Springs hereby determines that the village intends to proceed with the CBE Public Improvement Project. Section 2, the village manager is hereby authorized to retain bond counsel and solicit bids for the construction of improvements related to the CBE Public Improvement Project. Section 3, this council finds and determines that all formal actions of this council and any of its committees concerning and relating to the passage of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in those formal actions were in meetings open to the public, all in compliance with the law. Section 4 of this ordinance shall go into effect at the earliest period allowed by law.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Okay. This is our second reading, and we will have a formal public hearing. This is to authorize, again, it's not signing any contracts, but it's essentially authorizing the project to move forward. It's authorizing the manager to begin to look for financing for the CBE, and also to, once that financing is secured, to solicit bids. We have the engineered drawings, and so it really is ready for bid at this point. So, council, I don't know if we want to, if anybody wants to make comments, if we want to just, we could, we could hear, it might, we could hear from Community Resources and then open the public hearing, or, or open the public hearing and hear from Community Resources at that time. So Patty, did you want to add anything at this point? I know it's early for you.
No, I know this has been a topic of discussion for quite a while now, and I know that council has chosen to move forward with it. So at this point, I don't really think that there's anything for me to add, and just need to-
Thank you. So I will open the public hearing. As I said in the beginning, three minutes, please come up and state your name, and we'll take new comments first. If we'd like to start, I would like to start just to hear from, from Community Resources. Is somebody ready to present, talk? Well, then I'll open it up to anybody else. Can you just, yeah, move that around?
Sorry, still from our speaker earlier.
A group of five Yellow Springs residents, Chrissy Cruz, Kate Hamilton, Dawn Johnson, Taki Monolakis, and Christine Roberts have formed a referendum committee, Yellow Springs for Sustainable Development. The committee has retained the firm of McTeague, McGinnis, and Colombo, who specialize in election law, to assist with filing the referendum against the village. I want to say that throughout this, I've encountered a few people who cautioned me that taking this issue to referendum was the wrong thing to do because it would divide the community. And I thought about that for a while, because I love this community and I wouldn't want to hurt it. But after thinking about it for a while, I decided that I don't agree, because this isn't a battle or a war. I think it's just a very important question that our community is facing, a question important enough that we should all get to have our input. And I hope that as this referendum process plays out, we can sustain a focus on that question. Is this the right thing for Yellow Springs? And not let it become a divisive issue. If we keep to that agenda, when all is said and done, I'm sure that we will all make the right choice and be able to stand united and support that choice. I think that a lot of good people on both sides of the table, from differing perspectives and mindsets, have put good work into getting here. And the most important thing is that we are a community mindful people, living together and trying our best to do the right thing.
Thanks, Chrissy. Other comments? Dawn?
Section 6 of Article 8 of our state constitution says, "No law shall be passed authorizing any city by vote of its citizens or otherwise to become a stockholder in any joint stock company, corporation, or association, whatever, or to raise money for, or to loan its credit to, or in aid of any such company, corporation, or association." The history behind the adoption of Section 6 of Article 8 is relevant. In the early days of statehood, Ohio's fertile soil and abundance of water provided many opportunities, yet Ohioans lacked the efficient means to get their products to market. Thus, Ohio's prosperity depended on the construction of a transportation network. Since the state's own resources were limited, the legislature relied heavily on private enterprise to build and operate roads, bridges, ferries, canals, and railroads. Most of the canal system was financed directly by the state, resulting in debts of $16 million. In the 1830s, the state and local governments shifted to a policy of financing turnpike canal and railroad companies by lending credit or purchasing stock. Insofar as effective transportation networks sprang into being in a remarkably short time, these practices had the desired result, but they also had undesired results. They put the state's money and credit at risk in business schemes that often were risky at best and demonstrated willingness of the legislature and local bodies to use them, and was an open invitation for private interests to dip into the public till. Many of these companies failed, the public debt burdened as a consequence, and by 1850, the burden was more than the taxpayers could tolerate. Section 6, Article 8, was adopted to put a halt to these practices. The climate of the times was agitation and anger over the imposition of tax burdens on citizens for the benefit of private corporations and for the public losses incurred when subsidized corporations failed. All these times may have changed. The reason for the existence of Section 6 of Article 8 is valid today as it was in 1851. Its purpose is to prohibit private interest from tapping into public funds at taxpayers' expense. So, Ohio Supreme Court Justice Frances Sweeney, Sr. "The comprehensive plan and our subdivision regulations have some basis from Section 6 of Article 8, requiring developers to pay for their own infrastructure via security bonds or special assessments. Our state's founders learned that great financial jeopardy could arise from such folly, even when some intended purposes were realized. Why are we so foolhardy that we believe our wishing and cheerleading can overcome real estate reality? If community resources cannot get a private banker to back their plan, why should our precious taxes be placed in such peril?"
Thank you, Dawn.
My name is Tony Apse. I've been a Yellow Springs resident for 20 years. My wife and I live on South U Drive. I also want to say that if Community Resources wants to develop that land, they should do it with their own money and not use any taxpayer money. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm going to play.
It's okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Anna McClure. Let's see here, I wrote a couple things. Recently, I was amazed to learn that 30% of the space in the village is not taxable, comprising of Antioch College and various churches and nonprofit organizations, whereby Antioch College makes up half of that 30% of non-taxable space. It is, it is an understatement to stay, to say that we desperately need tax revenue, new businesses, and new jobs. No one can really argue with this. But the question is, how to achieve this in a way that makes logical business sense and will be a benefit for the greater good of the village and our goals? With that being said, I believe we should exercise extreme caution in using this $1 million in public money to fund a private project to build this road for the CBE with really no interest of business parties at the moment, or any other sound business plan to speak of. It's simply not sound business logic in this still very shaky economy. I am also deeply concerned that the allowance of public money to fund a private project could set the stage for soliciting of more of this to come in the future. So, thank you.
Thanks, Anna. Other comments?
Megan Bachman, Community Resources, want to thank council for its wisdom in moving forward on this project, which has been its project for the last 15 years. You know, seeing this through and taking the next step to really actually get it to the point where businesses can participate. It has been a long process that we've been going on, but this will be the crucial next step that is needed to actually get, to be able to get businesses in there. And we're so close, we're almost there, and I think it's the smart decision to not throw away all that work, to throw away the $400,000 in federal money remaining, all the millions that have, that we raised with councils, with the village's help, not throwing all that away, throwing all the energy away, throwing all that momentum away. It would be a huge loss, and the bigger risk, I think, would be not doing it. I mean, what's going to happen to this community? We, we see all these trends, we know the trends. 80% commuters in this village now. We lost 20% of the town's jobs just in the last 10 years, more if you look at, you know, the last few decades before that. This community is changing. Not doing anything is, would be a sin. Not doing anything is the bigger risk. So I want to, again, thank you for your wisdom in moving forward, taking that step. I'm very excited about this community dialogue, to all get on this together. I think one of the great things about this community is that people do care very passionately, and that's great, and we need to tap that, and we need to all be looking forward to what we can build there in this community. We've done all the work of deciding that this is the place, village has decided that. Community Resources has always been responding to what the village has asked from the very beginning. The village asked Community Resources to investigate a commerce park. Continually, we've been working with the village, and village identified that area of land. We've done all that work. We don't need to go back and do that work. We're ready to take that next, next step. We're excited to take that next step, because the next step involves getting a lot of people really excited about it, thinking about ideas and possibilities, and really using a lot of the creative potential of Yellow Springs for, in a positive direction for this community. So I'm excited to see the community move forward and actually try to reverse some of the trends that are affecting all of us. And, you know, again, despite misconceptions, this is not a private game. Community Resources is a local nonprofit organization of local people. I encourage everyone to read its charter, what it can and cannot do. It cannot, it is not even getting the money. This is, again, the village project is just funding itself, so there's no legal issue. And we're really excited to move forward with the village. We do have, we did a lot of effort into the latest document we created, which is a draft, and we look forward to feedback if there's other unanswered questions. So once again, thank you so much for wisdom and moving forward.
Thanks, Megan. Other comments? Jerry, I saw Jerry.
Jerry Sutton, I would add my voice to that of Megan. This has been a long time in coming. Citizens back in 97, including a couple, or at least one of the council members participated in a focus group in the community where they identified such a commerce park is a very desirable thing to pursue. So we've been working essentially since 97. It is, I appreciate the village now stepping up. It is, I appreciate the village now stepping up with this resolution and making a mark in the sand and going forward. Thank you.
Thanks Jerry. Christine?
So, I would like to incur, Christine Roberts, and I would like to encourage council to focus on our water. That's going to be a major, major thing. And it has fallen by the wayside somewhat. A lot of our necessary services have taken a backseat to this thing we call economic development. We've seen a lot of money put into economic development, and it has not really brought us the returns. I think the best development that Yellow Springs could have would be a focus on our necessary services, our roads, these things that are, let me say, in other words. In other words, rather than to expand at this moment when the whole economy is kind of in a contraction, I think we're better off to sort of pull in and take care of what we have. And just because we don't do it right now, doesn't take it off, doesn't take the CBA project off the table forever. But we, we were promised in the very beginning that our tax money would not be used for this purpose. We find it's kind of, almost insulting that they would think that because they failed to finance it themselves, that being Community Resources, that they can just come and take our tax money at this time when, again, we're in a contraction, we have some very necessary services that need our attention. I just encourage council to focus on kind of pulling in and strengthening what we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Roy?
I'm Torrey Pauls, Community Resources. And, you know, I am thrilled that the process has gotten this far. I do take everybody at their word that we're all concerned about the best interests of the community. We all live here together, and we just wanted to make it the best place we can. Welcome to Patty Bates. You took quite an evening to start. And, just a couple of thoughts. One, I was reviewing a tax bill the other day for the last, oh, I don't know, five or six years. And the amount that our taxes have gone up just staggered me, you know. It's, you know, I vote for the levies, obviously, but their incremental impact over years just shows what the cost burden is that we shoulder as individual residents because we have businesses moving out and there's no business entities to help shoulder those costs. So, that was just one thing that kind of brought it home to me. The other thing is that, you know, I helped start, you know, two or three businesses in town, actually. And I've gone through a very painful process, and you guys have all heard this story before, but a very painful process of trying to locate a business in town, which was made hard because there was no place to do it. We had to move heaven and earth to get a small business located to be able to stay in town. And, you know, we just can't take those kinds of chances, you know, again, and again, and again. We've got to have someplace that says, you know, for people, for corporations, companies, whether they grow, start here and grow here, or whether they are, you know, like-minded individuals coming from the outside, that, we have to have something that says, yes, there's a place for you to take root here, to, you know, invest with our community, to put down some roots, and, you know, together make a success. And so, without some business enterprises taking the place of Verna and, and the medical center that moved out, and so on and so forth, it's just going to become increasingly expensive to live here and, and less and less affordable. One other thing that doesn't get mentioned much is that the cost of utilities, right now, the individuals bear all the fixed costs. We don't have a lot of businesses to spread those around to. So, so I know it's, I know you'll proceed with all due caution, and I would encourage you to pass this and move to the next phase. Thank you.
Thanks Roy. Other comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table to, for council comment. Do you want to start with Marianne?
First, I would like to congratulate Community Resources on the plan that was in the council packet. I don't know if, I assume it's out on the table. But, I, I think it's very readable, and it makes a good case. So, I really appreciate it and thank Community Resources for putting this together. The concerns that I have about the CBE, well, first of all, I believe we need the space where the CBE is. I think that it's important that we have space and set aside space for economic development. And I think economic development in this community is critical for all the reasons that have just been said. I don't fault Community Resources for what has not been done. My concern mostly is what the village, where we are with the village government. We're in a significant deficit operating budget. The village has no real, strong, coherent, cohesive, strategic economic development plan. We've talked about having a designated CIC, but we haven't moved forward on that. And I think if we're going to get involved in working on this large and long-term project, that we need to have that discussion and presumably develop a designated CIC. I also would like to see some local investors get interested in this. I haven't seen that happen. There isn't a business plan for the CBE as yet. So, for those reasons, I'm not comfortable at this point putting, voting to put village money into this project. I do, I don't have a problem with putting village money in the project, but I don't think we, particularly the village government itself, is in a place where it's ready to do that. So, I will vote against it at this point. If it passes, I will support it, and I will do whatever I can to promote the CBE. If it does come to referendum and it doesn't, I'll still work for economic development.
Thanks Marianne. Brian?
Well, I mean, I don't think we're adding much new to the discussion at this point. I will just reiterate that what I've been quite persuaded by is that we do need to decide where everybody's at, and, you know, what we have set up in this process allows for a referendum to be brought forward to decide if the community as a whole is behind this. And so, I feel like all the things that Marianne has talked about are exactly where I'm at. I think we need a designated, designated CIC. I think we need to make sure that our economic development plan is current and where we want it to be. We need to have the energy and commitment behind it. So, what I want to see is, if the community is still behind this initiative, then that prioritizes for council that we need to get this going. And I don't believe that we can't do things like the water plant and still do a good job with the economic development piece, because that's where we will pull in citizens to get behind this.
Okay. Very short, you know. A number of councils have spoken on their position. It's time for this council to speak on their position. Once we do that, then it'll be time for the community to tell us really which way they want us to go. And we, as a council, will accept whichever decision. But, in the long term, whether the village residents feel we should go forward or not, I believe that CR will continue to pursue that effort of trying to minimize the tax burden on our citizens. So, so given that, I'm probably going to vote in the affirmative, so we can move forward.
Basically, I would underscore everything that Marianne really eloquently stated. And, as, I do want to thank Community Resources for the, putting together a really good and helpful information for this meeting. And, I do actually believe that there's good faith on both sides of the issue, and I am, I do caution that making wild allegations about somehow this being a corrupt deal, that, I think, that, that kind of poisoning of the well is counterproductive and not helpful. It's simply not true. I will vote against this, but I, like Marianne, will support it strongly if it is the will of council and community.
Thanks Lori. A clarification about this project is, we are building village infrastructure. We are not building a road or infrastructure for a, for another entity. We are building village roads. We're installing village water lines, and we're installing village sewer lines. So, this is our project, this is our infrastructure. And, this day and age, in development, municipalities are typically funding infrastructure. Developers are just not able to do it. We use strategies like TIF, Tax Increment Financing, to do that, where we take the, we take the property tax increases and apply that back to pay that bond payment, that debt service. So, it is, it is used everywhere. It's a strategy that's used everywhere. I do believe we have a vision. I mean, I, I feel like, you know, we, we did a vision plan, we did the Vision Miami Township, or Yellow Springs Miami Township a couple of years ago, and I feel like that actually really articulated a, a pretty good plan, where this community feels we are. You know, we, we value the environment, we value sustainability, we have energy independence, and food, the food culture, and, and locally grown, locally produced products. And I really think that, that one of the reasons we aren't out with this great marketing strategy is because there is no place for people to go. There is, so, you know, this is a situation where we actually do need the place before we can be out there telling people we want them to come to our town. At this point, we have no place to tell people. If I have somebody come to the door asking me, where can, we want to locate in Yellow Springs, until, until a few months ago, when 888 Dayton Street became more of a, of a reality, a commercial reality, there wasn't any place to tell them. So, you know, I really feel like this is, this, that there, that we do have opportunities. I do believe that people will come to Yellow Springs. I think it supports the whole idea of living and working. I mean, that's what sustainability is about. It's living and working in the same community. It's riding your bikes to work. It's not driving to Dayton, or Cincinnati, or Columbus. So, I, I think that, that, and again, and I agree, I'll support whichever way the community goes. I am happy to say that, that the clerk, and with Patty's help, is ready for the referendum. I mean, it's a, it's a very specific process. They've, they've been working on it, they've been talking to our legal counsel. So, Chrissy will probably be here at the end of the meeting, asking for the legislation, and we'll be ready to give it to you. And Judy and Patty will be working with you as, as needs to happen. So, I guess we're, no more comments, we're ready to call the vote.
Okay. House?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
McQueen?
No.
Askland?
No.
Wintra?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 2014-17.
This is an ordinance amending Section 252.06 Personnel Policy Manual of Chapter 252. Employees generally of Part II administrate code of the codified ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio. Whereas a major object of expenditures in the village budget is personnel cost, and whereas the details of administering personnel matters such as fringe benefits are a major influence on those costs. And whereas managing personnel matters in a consistent and fair manner supports productivity and morale. And whereas the current Personnel Policy Manual is in parts obsolescent, differs from current best practices. And whereas a committee of village staff have met to draft, propose new Personnel Policy Manual attached to this document as Exhibit A. Now therefore, the Council of Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, does hereby ordain that. Section 1, the existing Section 252.06 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs is hereby repealed. Section 2, Council does hereby approve and adopt the attached revised Personnel Policy Manual dated July 1, 2014, which is hereby incorporated by reference in its entirety. Section 3 of this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest date permitted by.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
So, move? Second?
I actually, well, first of all, I want to, I want to thank Kent Bristol. This is, I, I actually will go back and thank the two past managers, because this has been ongoing, I think. I think Mark had started this.
I know Mark.
And Laura continued it, and Kent came in and he said, this was, he was absolutely going to finish this before he turned it over to Patty. And it's been a long time coming, as he said, as the, as the legislation said, I mean, we were, we were operating outside the law. I mean, things we had in our, in our employment manual were outside the law. We were basically told by our, our insurance agency that we needed to have an up-to-date personnel policy to protect ourselves and to protect our employees. So, if Patty's okay with it, I'm actually going to turn it over to Kent to make some comments about the personnel policy.
Absolutely.
Yeah, maybe a little bit about the process, because I don't think citizens are aware of. My understanding is this wasn't the word from on high, but that employees were actively engaged in the process.
Yeah, it was a committee, primarily supervisory people, but as Karen pointed out, this process actually probably goes back at least five years, if not longer. And there've been various employee committees and members involved in critiquing and shaping. And, actually Ruth Van Lilick is the one who needled me and pushed me into getting this thing finished. It is necessary. Does every village employee agree with every word in it? Probably not. But we think it's a good balanced document that protects the employees' interests and represents what's good for the village together. And, I spent two years full-time as a labor negotiator in my earlier part of my career. And then my, some of my experience is a little out of date, but I think this is a very good document. I didn't have much to do with it, but the only part I wrote was, there's a set of work rules in there that are sort of basic instructions to employees about what we expect from them. You know, show up for work on time, be ready to go to work, you know, dressed, fed, rested, and free of any mind-altering substances. You know, be productive while you're here, that kind of thing. And that was my only contribution. I, I did it 20 years ago, and they referred to it then as my Ten Commandments. I watered it down a little bit.
Thanks Kent.
I will say that this was a topic of discussion at the staff meeting this morning, and the employees overall seemed to be very happy with this. I mean, of course, there are some who aren't with certain parts of it, but in general, it seems to be a well-agreed-upon document.
Great. Great. And, and it also obviously passed the muster of legal counsel. We worked with Chamber, or Coolidge Walls Personnel folks. I did notice there was a little bit of a formatting issue that I'll pass along, we don't need to talk about it, but. Any other comments from council? We will, we're doing.
I, I, I mean, I read it. I didn't totally read it word for word, but I did read it. And I was very impressed with, you know, everything that's in here. I also felt, it was interesting to me to see what benefits our workers get. And I felt good about that. I felt like there's good, good benefits. And there were two, I had two comments, just to pass along. One in regard to hiring relatives. And I noticed, one thing that we might want to include is, you know, when we talk about, you don't hire someone that lives with you, but there are people that have relationships, primary relationships with people who don't live with them. And we might want to consider having that as not, you know, you don't hire your, the person who you've been in a- person who you've been in a relationship with 10 years even though you don't live with them. The other thing I noticed is that, that the mediation program wasn't mentioned in regard to conflicts within the staff. And I thought, well, maybe there is a place to you, I mean, we have a mediation program. And sometimes I could imagine that there'd be conflicts that happen within the staff or between departments or whatever that the mediation program might be able to serve. So those are the only comments.
Any other comments?
Great job.
And it, this will get two readings. This was the first reading. Any comments from, from citizens? I'm sure you all read it. It was only, what, like 80 pages? 92 pages.
92 pages.
It was not in the electronic that I am aware of unless I missed it.
It wasn't.
Yeah, you're right.
So I would like it to be. Thank you.
Oh, wow. I did not know that.
Yeah. I thought, huh, strange. I should have, when I noticed it wasn't there, I should have done something. I apologize for not doing so.
Judy, would you please call the roll?
Indeed. Askland?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Wintra?
Yes. Now we're moving on to Resolution 2014-31, enabling the village manager to issue a RFQ for a consultant for the water project.
And I have made a slight editorial change to this resolution, which is reflected in the one that I'll read. This is authorizing retaining professional services in support of using a design-build process to construct a new water treatment plant. Whereas the village's present water treatment plant is in need of extensive repair and needs to be replaced. And whereas it is anticipated that using a design-build process in place of the conventional method of separating those functions will shorten the time necessary to complete the project. And whereas no person currently in the employ of the village has previous experience with this process. Now therefore, Council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio does hereby resolve that. Section 1, the village manager is hereby authorized to determine the type of advisory and consulting help needed to guide the village through this new but promising process. Section 2, to seek the person or firm best suited to provide the guidance the village needs, the village manager is directed to issue a request for qualifications and solicit proposals. Section 3, once the process is complete and a preferred provider of the services required is identified, the village manager is directed to report her findings to council for the concurrence and approval.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Well, we actually talked about this at length in the earlier part of the meeting. Maybe the, this might caught, maybe require a little bit more discussion than we were intending. Patty, do you have input on this?
I've not done a design-build. I've done a design-bid-build, which is one of the different processes we talked about. It does take a little bit more time, although I don't, not being familiar with design-build in the timeframe, I don't know that it would be substantially longer, but it would probably be longer to do a design-bid-build, just because it's an extra step in the process. That said, I think if you do the design bid in, or design-build in the correct way, you can probably get the level of material and equipment in there that you want. You just have to be very careful.
Mm-hmm.
You have to be fairly specific in, in what you want. And it probably will add a little bit to your cost, but in the end, you may have a better plan.
Kent, after hearing the presentation and what I thought was, you know, a little bit of equivocation, do you have any different thoughts on, on the construction process?
My impression is that our scale, we could practically buy what would be termed a package plant. We could buy something that was, you know, prefabricated and scaled to our needs. And I don't think, you know, the, the hard decisions would be the upfront one the council has to make, which is are we going to soften? And if we are, which process are we going to use? I, I do know from conversations I've had with people that there are residents who are opposed to having all of the water in the village softened. I can understand that, but I think the benefit for the whole village, we've talked about, well, two-thirds of us have water softeners in our homes. Speaking from my own selfish perspective, I can't haul 40-pound water to salt up and down my cellar stairs anymore. I really don't have soft water coming out of the pipe from the village. We've had a conversation with several of our major users and found that our water quality as we deliver it to them requires them to have their own secondary treatment plan on the premises to convert the water we deliver to something they can use. So I think there are a lot of very valid arguments for softening and I'd urge you to take that route.
And I'd like to add to, that I would agree that we need to soften, simply because it does have a corrosive effect on the infrastructure that the village is responsible for. And, and that's a substantial investment that we're talking about in, in water line alone.
Let me make, you asked a question of, we mentioned sequestering agents, and I've known about those for years. Frankly, I've never promoted it because we had a pretty substantial controversy just a few years ago about fluoride in water, which is supposed to be put in the water for health benefits and yields, and there's controversy about that. I just couldn't see Yellow Springs being receptive to adding another chemical to the water to keep the pipes healthy. Maybe, maybe I misjudge people, but.
Well Kent, when you were, when Karen asked you a question initially, were you saying that you think the design bill would be a good process? Is that what you're saying?
I think it is, yes. Yes, yes. I think there are very few things that can go wrong. And I think with some pretty astute pre-planning that we can get a very good plan at a reasonable cost and in a shorter timeframe, we wouldn't be losing another process.
What I would assume we would do is something similar, I think somebody may have mentioned it, or one of the gentlemen may have, that, that we may very well have this, this particular consultant carry through the entire project because we'll need an onsite project administrator, we'll need an inspector. We just don't have that expertise on staff.
Yeah. And that's why the resolution is worded the way it is. I'm not certain whether we need an engineer, an owner's agent, project manager, or maybe some combination of all of those.
Right.
That might be represented not by a single person, but by a firm with multiple talents.
I would agree with that.
And are we saying now that, that, so that if we bring that person on board now, then that person could, could provide information to us, maybe some, some extended pricing information to help us make the decision on the softening on, that's what you're suggesting?
Yeah. You would just write the RFQ to include all of that and take it from the initial consultation all the way through the design-build process.
If, if we choose the design-build process, I mean, passing this resolution doesn't mean we have to go that route, right? Because at this point, we're just doing RFQs, so.
Correct. Yeah. In any event, you're going to need a project management person.
Right.
And that would, in a project like this, that would generally be someone from an engineering firm or a consulting firm.
Any other comments from council?
Only, only in, in that, you know, we've heard talk about council needs to be working on some, some key infrastructure issues. This is an issue that council has been working on for a couple of years. And just recently, we have accelerated the process. We have kind of agreed that we want to go with a new plant. And I don't know about the rest of you folks, but my consensus is that we need to soften our water.
Okay.
So, you know, we're making key decisions to move us forward. And, and I was really impressed with the amount of outside help we've been getting by the way of Ohio EPA, helping us get our present plant up to a somewhat operational condition, plus helping us to look into the future as to what we need to do to make sure we have sustainable water for our residents to come. So I've been very encouraged on the, the amount of outside help we've been, we've been getting. And they promised to continue that until we are completed with this project.
One of the pieces of information that I'm still sort of processing from the information we received, from the, from the consultants who spoke at the beginning, is that, that what our, our hard water is very corrosive. It both lines the pipes, but it also breaks down the pipes. And particularly then if you use salt water softeners, two-thirds of us do, you're not having the scaling anymore, so you're not lining your pipes. But the water is very corrosive, so metals are getting into your water. You're actually getting lead and copper from your, your softened water. And probably if your house is new enough, you're also getting the metals from your non-softened waters, because it takes, it takes time for that buildup to happen. And usually when that happens, then you have to toss out whatever, or, you know, if it's a coffee maker, if it's anything, you're going to have to toss it, toss it out. So that was, that was new information for me. And so sometimes we think that the worst thing you can do is add a chemical, but sometimes when you aren't treating the water, you're actually adding heavy metals, which are one of the worst things that you can have in water.
Thanks Lori. Any comments or questions from citizens? We'll call the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving on to Resolution 2014-32, permitting the village manager to extend the village's contract with Rumkey for an additional year.
Okay, whereas the Village of Yellow Springs provides solid waste collection service to residents in some businesses in the village through a contract with private waste hauler. And whereas the village's current three-year contract with Rumkey ends in August of 2014. And whereas the contract is eligible for a one-time, one-year extension with no changes in rates or services. And whereas council has reviewed and recommends accepting this extension of their existing contract with Rumkey Incorporated. Now therefore, the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, the village council accepts the bid extension option from Rumkey Incorporated as indicated in Attachment A. Section 2, extension of this contract does not imply the granting of an exclusive franchise to Rumkey to collect solid waste from non-residential customers in the village. Section 3, the village manager is authorized to represent the Village of Yellow Springs in the signing of all matters related to this contract.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
So, and this is pretty darn self-explanatory. We're at the end of our three-year contract period with Rumkey. We, it's certainly just not, with a new manager in and with Kent leaving and the other things that we were doing, it, it just wasn't a priority for us to renegotiate or, or to look at, bid out the contract to other haulers. They're holding the price, so this just seems like a very logical thing to me. The one thing I would, I would mention to, to Melissa Van Zandt, who is here, is that I know there have been issues about the, the solid waste going into deficit. And I know that while this, while the contract is staying the same, there are potentially fuel charge, fuel surcharges if fuel prices go up. And I don't know if we have a process to pass those along to the homeowners, but we probably, that, that's probably one of the ways where we're, one of the places that we're losing money. So we might want to look into that.
Can I ask one, I noticed that with the service that they have with Trotwood, they're in the process of renewing and they're going to recycling. But they offered their customers for the regular trash, they offered a, a 96-gallon container that someone could rent for $2. And I didn't know if, I know in the past, we were able to get a larger container, so I don't know if that's something that we can look in after we agree on this, just to see if there's a, a larger container. Number one, it makes it a lot easier for, for those folks, because they can row it and.
Right.
And put it in versus, in my case, I got a sticker for three, so I'm going to use three cans. But, you know, so if we could look in, because I would be more than happy to go to the much larger one container.
And you mean it's an additional $2?
No, you could rent it from them.
What, what size container is it now?
It was, I'm sorry.
96?
Everybody buys their own.
On a lot of the newer.
I'll be logging for Rumcap.
Okay.
End of the conversation here.
Okay.
In Trotwood, yes, Trotwood has the option for people to rent a 96-gallon wheeled cart, similar to the wheeled carts that you guys use for recycling. Yeah, would probably be the kind of thing that you would, if you would want to go to a completely carted system, that you would probably want to do at, at a, you know, at a new bid time. Because for one of your extension, to add, you, you have a pretty progressive system where you have a tiered system here in the community, which is, Yellow Springs has really been on the cutting edge of solid waste recycling with Rumkey for 26 years. And you guys were the first communities to, to go to curbside recycling in this area, which was, so we've, all the changes that have happened in the last 15 or 20 years in recycling, we're always, when, when there's a new innovative thing, we're always, let's, let's, you know, usually Yellow Springs is our, is our test case because there, because there's so many people that are so conscientious about recycling. The carts, the more people, your recycling has really lifted up with the advent of the carts here in the last, you know, in the last year. And before I came to the meeting tonight, I was looking at your statistics comparing 2014's recyclable numbers are up about 12 and a half percent over, over last year, just in the first, just in the first five months of the year. So, so recycling is still very, you know, still very bogue in the community. There are some communities we deal with where recycling tends to kind of, they, they need a, a respark all the time because things kind of, things kind of drift off or they plateau. So the cart program, the cart programs for trash are, for a community that wanted to do a tiered program like you guys have, would be very, it's a little more cumbersome, a little more expensive, because typically a program like that would have three carts. You'd have a 96, 96-gallon cart, which is the largest cart, the type that we use in Trotwood. Then you have a 65-gallon, which is the size that you have for your, for your recyclables now. And then a kind of a taller, or a skinny, skinny one, it's kind of top-heavy that tips over a lot, that is 35 gallons for the small, for the smaller users. It's, it's a doable thing. It probably isn't, it probably isn't the, the best way to go in a one-year extension situation, but it's something that I'd be glad to talk to Mr. Bates about and we can welcome to the community.
Thanks.
And we'd be glad to explore that probably as we look at, look at.
Next year.
Next year.
Yeah, definitely. Great.
Thanks. Good that you were here. Any other comments or questions? Citizens, comments or questions? Call the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, sorry, I'm, sorry Paul. Go.
Yes, Paul Evans. Encourage you to go ahead and extend this one year, but in addition to task possibly the Environmental Commission to study this area with citizen input to look at new ways to handle our recycling. Antioch College, for instance, has quite a facility for recycling, including, for instance, fluorescent bulbs. As we use more and more curly tubes and long tubes, disposing of those are quite risky. They have a system. Maybe we can partner with them on having fluorescent tube tubes these or something and, and get that waste stream out. That type of discussion could go on in the Environmental Commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay. Take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2014-33, approving the 2015 tax budget.
Okay, I'll read this short and sweet and let Melissa take it from there. Says, Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that section 1. The attached 2015 tax budget has been reviewed and approved by said council.
Thank you. Okay, now does she come up and talk, or should I ask for a motion?
You can do it either way. You can do it either way. You'll ask for the motion. Why don't you ask for the motion?
Yeah, go ask. You have a motion?
You're probably going to.
So moved.
Second.
I'm not going to talk about it.
Yeah. Probably citizens don't really understand what this is, so.
And this is, this is my first go-around with a tax budget too, so we are required to do this annually through the ORC in order to demonstrate that the money that we receive from tax dollars is being used appropriately. So this is part of the reason why I'm not going to be doing a mid-year review, because it was much more comprehensive than what I had anticipated. And so you've got a seven-page document of detail and the capital for 2015, a lot of this is just repeat of what had already been presented at one of the previous meetings. And I did realize that since this took me basically all the way down till the last minute on Thursday, that those capital improvements need to be included. that those capital improvements need to be included on the lines for each of the appropriate budgets. So what you see will just be incorporated into that bottom line. So I didn't, I was so worried about getting these on here that I didn't incorporate them into the actual individual lines on the pages. So there was that omission. But with the holiday, I was in major crunch time. So this gets sent into the county auditor along with our amortization schedule. And that's that, basically. So it's just the first exercise in looking at the 2015 budget and where we anticipate ending out the year at the mid-year range, so...
And you... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I will go into more detail with a mid-year presentation at the next meeting, so...
Okay. And you do present this to the auditor, right?
Yes.
You have to go there in person?
Well, this will get mailed into the auditor. And then if the Budget Commission decides that they want to have a hearing, then they will invite us to go in and then explain anything that they may see.
And I just would like to add, first of all, Melissa, great document. But second of all, this document, even though it's a requirement that you file it by a deadline, it's a living, breathing document. And council can amend it at any time.
Okay, so...
Thank you. Any questions, council?
I mean, I don't think we need to talk about them tonight. But there were a couple of numbers I noticed, like liquor and beer permits, which goes down to $160, and a few that doubled or halved. And so if it's relevant when you do that presentation, just explain why.
Yeah, what I'm gonna do is, I plan to go through each of the funds and give any highlights, like, because some places we're doing a little bit better than others. So what I did was, I looked at where we were at the mid-year point when I prepared this. And I just made conservative judgments based on what we've already been brought in, what we've already brought in at this point in the year. So I gave the projection for the end of the year, and then I gave a conservative projection for 2015 based on where we're at this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Comments, questions from citizens?
And it actually asks for a roll call, so if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and do that. Wintra?
Yes.
Asklin?
Yes.
Housh?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 2014-34, authorizing emergency repairs to a water treatment plant.
Okay, and retroactively approving issuance of purchase orders to achieve that end. Whereas filter number three at the water treatment plant has failed. And whereas this body has already approved the making of emergency repairs at cost for parts and labor of $28,400. And whereas in the process of dismantling filter number three, it was discovered that the extent of the damage and the cost to repair it are greater than originally believed. Now therefore, the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio does hereby resolve that. Section 1, the continued use of the supplier, Severn Trent, and contractor, Artisan of Pioneer, originally retained for this project is hereby approved. Section 2, the approved total original parts cost is hereby increased by $9,300 to a total of $24,300. Section 3, the approved original labor estimate of $13,400 is hereby increased by $24,000 to a total of $37,400. Section 4, given the urgency of the needed repairs, village staff is hereby excused from following standard procurement processes in the interests of expediting the process.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. And I will, Jerry, Sims, and myself, Joe Bates, and Kent met with two representatives from EPA last week. And we talked about this. Kent, I'm gonna ask you to come up and talk about this repair. Unfortunately, like any time you have a repair at your house, once you get in it, it sometimes is worse than expected. And that's what happened here. Kent, can...
Yeah, and filter number three failed because some of... The filter is basically an elaborate series of drains on the floor of a tank overlaid with several feet of sand. The water filters through the sand and then into these underdrains, and then out into the system. And some of the underdrains literally blew loose from the floor of the filter. And we originally looked at replacing the failed parts. It's gonna be a pretty simple, quick process. But as we started removing pieces, got all the sand out and so on, we discovered that when the filter blew out, it blew sand into all of these underdrains and effectively rendered them useless. So instead of just replacing a small section of less than a quarter of the filter, we've now got to replace the entire filter. Effectively, rebuild it from the ground up. So we didn't discover that until we took it apart. But when the pieces blew loose, they allowed sand to get down into the rest of the thing. And we've tried vacuuming it out, flushing it out, and nothing works, so...
Do we have a schedule, Kent?
Right now, we're ready to begin hearts, but it's probably gonna be about another month.
And one of the reasons that we met with EPA is related to the fact, so that now we're depending on those two filters. And Joe will be working to put together a contingency plan. And that's gonna be great. I mean, it's gonna be something that's good for us to have. And this is also a reminder to the citizens that we are... I don't want to say we're under a water emergency. We're not. We are basically underwater conservation. So don't wash your cars. Don't water your lawn. I don't think you're gonna have to for a while after today. Thank goodness, the weather's been helpful. And don't fill swimming pools or any kind of, you know, non-necessary kind of yard watering and landscaping use. So, and as soon, I'm not sure when, after the repair is made, I would say that will be until we hear from Joe Bates, that there will be some kind of an announcement in the news that you can do that. The car, as far as your cars are concerned, the car wash is great, because they actually recycle the water. So that is actually a relatively conservative way to wash your car, so...
That's good to know.
You can use kisses and hugs.
And for your dog.
Yes.
I'd love to put it in perspective. This is probably the only silver lining I can think of to our loss of our manufacturing base. Our use of village utilities has diminished considerably from where it was 20 years ago. And so, well, our plant has scaled to produce 1.7 million gallons a day. Right now, the village is actually using somewhere between 350 and 400,000 gallons a day. So when the plant is whole and working as it should be, we've got the capacity to deliver four times as much water as we typically use. And much of that, again, is because people like Renee and Antioch Publishing use big chunks of that water, and they're not there anymore. So our use is declining considerably. So even with two filters, we've still got the ability to produce over a million gallons a day. The reason we're concerned is, okay, we've had one filter fail. What if the second one fails? Well, we've still got enough capacity to meet our usual daily demand. But now we're really right on the edge. And the place where we're compromised or marginalized is in case of some major fire or something of that sort might be an issue. And we have 2 million gallons of water in tanks on the hill outside, next to Gaunt Park. So we're in good shape there, but still, we're not as healthy as we could be. And so we need to get on with this.
Thanks, Kent. Any comments from, questions from council?
Just a question about the contingency plan that you referenced as referring to a loss of a filter?
Right. What would happen in case of a further loss? And it's, Joe's already working on it. He's actually getting some help from the water plant operator in the city of Sidney, where Mark Kundav is now. So that'll be something that's good for now, that EPA wants to see now. But it really is just kind of a permanent plan. It will be a good plan. It can be changed as needed. But it's good for us to have that contingency plan, no matter what. Comments from citizens? I'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have one last piece of legislation, 2014-35, approving, it's about an OPWC grant. Judy, read it.
Yep. This is authorizing the village manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement program and to execute contracts as required. Whereas the state capital improvements program provides financial assistance to political subdivisions for capital improvements to public infrastructure. And whereas the Village of Yellow Springs is planning to make a capital investment to purchase and make operational and remote metering system for utility meters. And whereas the infrastructure improvement above described is considered to be a priority need for the community and to improve the safety of village employees tasked with meter reading. Now therefore, the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio does hereby resolve that. Section 1, the village manager is hereby authorized to apply to the Ohio Public Works Commission for funding as described above. Section 2, the village manager is further authorized to enter into any agreements as may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. And Section 3, this resolution shall be effective upon its adoption.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna turn this over to Patty. This is Patty's first order of business as a manager.
It is. It is. Kent received notification late last week that there was an OPWC, which stands for Ohio Public Works Commission, grant fund round coming up, and that the deadline for the submission of applications is the 18th, I believe, of this month. To that end, one of the things we discussed this morning in the staff meeting was what might be an appropriate project for this. And one of the things that came to light is that we have handheld meters for reading the electric and perhaps the water. But we do not have the antenna that allow them to be remote read, which means you don't have to physically go up to the meter and read it. You can walk within a certain proximity of it. It greatly reduces your meter reading time, and it's safer. Apparently, we had a meter reader get bit by a dog recently for going in a backyard to read an electric meter. There are primarily two things that you need to apply for an OPWC grant. One of them is an engineer's estimate on the cost. And the other thing is a resolution from your legislative body that says, yes, we would like to apply for this grant. So that is why the resolution is in there tonight. Unfortunately, I do not have the numbers, because it did just come up today. If it's new infrastructure, which, I don't believe they're gonna consider this new infrastructure. They're gonna consider it rehab. Because we have part of the equipment, and we're just going to rehab that equipment to make it better suit our needs. If they will consider it that way, we can put in as little as 11% match. And you can put in 11%, 21%, 31%. If they consider it new infrastructure, then it's a 50-50 grant match. But considering that we have most of the equipment in hand, and the antennae are normally the lesser expensive part of the equipment, you know, this is probably going to be a small grant application. And I don't see the cost being very prohibitive.
Thank you. And I appreciate, I think we should have a grant request going in. We should never let this cycle pass without putting in something. So I appreciate it.
The fact that you put it in, even if you're granted the money, you're by no means obligated to accept it. If you turn it down, it will go to the next project in line as designated by the district committee. There are several districts in the state of Ohio. And it will go down to the next project. The money won't be wasted if you turn it down. Somebody will get it.
Can I ask a question about this? Does this need a line in it that indicates that the village will provide whatever match is required?
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea. I don't know that it's necessarily required in their legislation.
Can we verbally amend to include that?
What you said. Any comments from citizens? Call the vote. All those in favor signify by... Oh, Nick, I'm sorry. Why you keep missing?
That's okay.
Minor, hopefully helpful point. Nick Buddhist, Director Glenn Helen. I've completed applications for the Ohio Public Works Commission for a different program. And one of the things that they look for is a statement of where the match is coming from.
Right.
So to the extent that you're able to provide that authorization, that'll make it easier for the proposal to be completed.
If you want to add electric utility, and Nick has a good point. If you want to add electric utility, that would be where your matching funds would come from.
Thank you.
I just have a question out of curiosity from my own understanding. These pieces of equipment would allow the meters that we presently have in place to be read remotely?
Remotely?
Or do we have, or do we have to put in a new meter?
No, no, no. It's the meters that you currently have.
Yeah.
And right now, the equipment is handheld, and they walk up and they punch the numbers in.
Right.
You add an antennae to it, and it allows it to get into a proximity of your meter and read your meter, the signal from your meter. Then they would walk onto the next meter, get into a certain proximity of it, it would read that meter.
That only makes good sense. Now, is my meter for the water, because there's a pit? They have to open it. Is that the water meter?
That's the water meter.
And so they wouldn't have to get into the garden anymore? Which is, my dog is not the problem, it's the flowers.
Yeah. Once the antennae is added to the water meter, yeah. Right now, we're talking about electric. But the plan is to go ahead and do them to water later. And yes, that would cause them to no longer get in your garden.
That would be much to their advantage, because that's always a bit of a trick. My dog wouldn't bite anybody, but the garden might.
Anything else? Call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done with legislation. Next on the agenda is citizens' concerns. And that's for anything that isn't already an agenda item.
Nick has something. And then Kent.
That's because people, that's why it's here. He's just doing...
Yeah.
Raise your hand high.
Nick Buddhist, Director Glenn Helen, again. My area of concern feels a lot more modest than some of the momentous issues we've been considering today. But I wanted to bring to council, but I understand, I found out today that the village had approved a day road-long road closure in front of Glenn Helen for July 19th, for purposes of a bike race. And I don't know where in the village process that happens, whether that's something that's the council or the village manager, or that's something the police department handles on its own. But I wanted to bring to council the awareness that that creates a hardship for the Glenn and for people that plan to visit the Glenn on a given summer Saturday, including a wedding that's scheduled on the premises. And it's reasonable to anticipate that 200 to 300 cars would be coming in and out of the Glenn Helen parking lot over the course of that day. And I would imagine that when road closures are considered, that some efforts towards accommodation are made to the entities that are impacted and would like guidance from council on where we turn to see how we can help minimize the impact to Glenn Helen visitors and especially the wedding guests that we'd be hoping to serve two weeks from now.
Patty, I mean, I know some, have some information. Do you have any information? Was that talked about? It's my understanding that the race promoter is actually over at the township trustee meeting tonight. I had texted Colin, or actually, I sent Colin your email to Lori. I hope you don't mind expressing your concerns. And Colin said he would talk to him. I mean, this was set up a few months ago. It went through, I think it started with Colin, and then to the PD, and then Ruth, I know Ruth Ann's been working on it. Is that correct, Kent? So the staff, and did you have a role? I mean, were you aware of the...
I knew about it, it's about it.
I think that, my understanding, because I will say that the chamber has not been involved intentionally. I believe the race grew. I believe that the scope of the race went from potentially a few hours to now all day. And I think that that's part of what... I don't know that our staff here was aware of it. But I will, what I'm saying is that Colin is aware of the concerns. Patty can let Naomi, Naomi Penrod, our sergeant here, has been the lead person here. here. And Ruth Ann, maybe they can all talk about it tomorrow and see. And as I said, Colin is aware of the concerns and of the problems.
Yeah. My understanding was it was only going to be closed briefly, not all day.
No. I mean, what they, what it is, is that they have, I think they have about 15 or 20 races, different age groups, different lengths. So, so every 15 or 20 minutes, there's a different race going off all day.
And different directions. So some people are doing down to John Ryan and back, and some people I think are going presumably farther and back. I guess, again, I don't know where the process is for approving a road closure, but it seems from a policy standpoint that it would be reasonable to, to solicit feedback from, from folks who might be involved and, and to place the, the burden of accommodating the businesses on if there's a single entity such as the race organizers placing that burden on the, on the race organizers rather than individual businesses or homeowners or nonprofits or our police force.
And I, and I will tell you, Nick, that that is, one of the things that was discussed at, at the meeting this morning was the process and how we could make it a little bit better. And it wasn't because of the bike race, it was actually because of another event. But we did discuss how we could expand the process a little bit to make it better. And so that will definitely be something that we'll look at. And if you would please email me some times and details on the, the wedding thing, and then I will get with Naomi and Ruth Ann.
Happy to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Any other comments? Kent? Is this private citizen Kent Bristol?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm sorry, sir, but that's not allowed.
I want to thank Patty Bates for coming to join us.
Thank you.
And wish her a long and productive and enjoyable tenure. I want to thank council. I enjoy my retirement a lot. As someone who's basically a Calvinist, this life of idleness and pleasure, this doesn't suit me. And I really, I really appreciated the opportunity to come back and work for a while, and it's been a really good experience. One of the advice columnists one time, and I don't remember whether it was Dear Abby or Anne Landers, they're always getting letters from their readers saying how people don't appreciate hairstylists, waiters, letter carriers, whatever. And so they said, well, who do you think is the most underappreciated group? And she said she thought it was local elected officials, and I agree. I really admire all of you for putting yourselves out there and, and testing your popularity with the public. And the time you spend on the village's business and the abuse you take. And I've had it a pleasure and a privilege to work with you. And I also want to thank the many villagers who stop me from time to time and thank me. I figure you did me a favor, but I've enjoyed it and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
That was really. Any other comments? Joan. I'm waiting. Sure.
Patty, you'll get to know me. I'm Joan Edwards. I have a couple of ongoing concerns. One has to do and with a proposal that Lori made last year to put a temporary restraint on the spraying of any herbicides, pesticides, or anything of that sort by the village. Now, this isn't going to say that private citizens aren't going to go ahead and use them. But I would like to make a request that that become a permanent resolution on the part of the village. And that you go and extensively look into, and I keep sending Lori information on the toxicity of these chemicals. They're extremely toxic. 24D is an incredibly toxic material. It doesn't just go away in spite of what the manufacturers and the EPA would like to have you think. And it was applied last year, you may or may not know, Patty, it was applied full strength without dilution at the pool. And when they applied it, they didn't put up the sign that said that there had been spraying of this chemical. And so there were kids walking around on this extremely toxic land. And I don't know what's going to be done with that land. I know there's been some discussion on redoing it so that there isn't grass there at all. But we're killing bees at a very rapid rate and we will be in extreme deficit if we continue to kill our bees. So I would like to request that the village make that a permanent resolution to not apply any kind of herbicide or pesticide to village property. So that's number one. Number two has to do with the, the little barriers that have been put up at the, well, it's actually the three ways. Stop at my corner. I live on the corner of West South College and East Dean and right across from the high school. And they put up some short little, I don't know what they are.
Bumpers.
Put up speed bumps. Part of the problem with the speed bumps that they apply is that they're too short. And so people very easily go around them. Some people get to the point where they almost stop to go around them. Some people do stop. It has slowed people down considerably. I'd like to have that looked at to see if something else could be used that wouldn't cause, the problem with those speed bumps is that if people are hauling a piece of equipment behind them, like any of the mowing things and so on, it's really hard on them to get around the corner. See, so they go around instead of going over the speed bump. At least it is slowing most people down. I've seen a couple of people just go zipping around it. But it's too short if you're going to have that kind of a speed bump because they just go zipping by. So it's still the issue of people not stopping at that corner. And it is a hazardous corner because it's the high school and there are kids playing around the street and so on. So I'd like to continue exploring some resolution to that issue.
Thanks, Joan.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. We have no special reports and we have no old business. The next item on the agenda is, oh, I'm sorry. We were going to take a five-minute break.
It's been three hours.
That's true. We have a very well-hydrated.
Never anyone.
What?
Oh, my, thank you.
Yes. What I think would be a better solution to do is that kind of a bump.
Statement that I can...
That you can't, they can't, the person who stops if they stop.
It doesn't really matter because there's just not that much left to do. The street musician stuff, hopefully, hopefully that won't take that long.
To some extent, it's because the street...
We have a few people here that can speak about it.
Yeah, maybe I'll throw it, maybe, since, because I do have this to read, so maybe I will throw it in under new business.
Yeah, while there are still people here. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
What are you guys doing tonight?
It's discussion. Yeah, but it's discussion, I mean, there've been some proposals made from different...
Okay, so we're all back?
Council people have talked to business owners, more than I, I've talked to a couple of business owners. I mean, it's good that you're here. Oh, and then there's going to be one, I think, one, I think, one, like, decision is to make.
Judy, we're ready to get started. Calling the meeting back to order again. Next on the agenda, and I, before we start, I do, I will be adding another item to new business. A little, just a brief review of the appeal of the recent planning commission decision. And the, what will be on council's agenda at the next meeting. First, we'll talk about the street musician discussion. I'm going to turn it over to Brian, he's been working on it.
Okay, so I know there's at least one person here to speak, and maybe a couple. I, I guess, just wanted to give a little background, talk about a few issues that have come up, and then I think we're interested in having a discussion to see where we need to go. About three months ago, a petition was brought to the council meeting asking us to ban amplified music downtown. It was signed by quite a few people that work or own businesses downtown. And we then began to explore this through the Public Art Commission. That's been on our agenda the last couple of months. We've been given lots of different things that other municipalities are doing. An interesting agreement, MOU, memorandum of understanding type idea from Portland, which wasn't really a law, but was more of a, everybody involved kind of agreed on the standards so that we could all get along. Actually, Chrissy Cruz brought an ordinance from Cambridge, Massachusetts, which we looked at. And I think a lot of us have done our own research and seen a lot of things. There have been some good discussions in the Public Art Commission meeting. So, I guess the first thing I want to do is kind of talk about what the current status of the law is. Because I do think it's important, because the complaints have continued. There've been a couple situations where things have escalated downtown, there've been arguments, visitors that have been upset, businesspeople that have been upset. I get at least a couple calls a week, since I've been sort of the point person on this with the Public Art Commission. So it has not gone away. So I guess the first thing I wanted to do was just mention, under our current code, it's section 634.04 titled "Sound Level Limitations by Land Use Class." I mean, you can go in and read what this is about, but basically, the current code, when it comes to noise and nuisance, breaks it down in terms of decibels. And so, there are different levels of what's acceptable for decibels. And if we do start enforcing this, because of some of the complaints that I think have arguably gotten a little bit out of hand, it would involve a police officer, if called on a complaint, to bring a decibel meter out, see if that is in violation of the current code, and then go from there. Issue a warning, possibly issue a fine. So those are things that are already in the code. And I guess I mention that because it, at this point, what I'm encouraging is that rather than things escalate downtown, whether that, rather than there be sort of a battle of the bands between competing music sources, I think it would be a lot better if those things were handled in a calmer way. We do technically have a way to resolve that under the current code. But what these discussions have led to is, do we need to have a dedicated ordinance related to street musicians and performances downtown? Some of the ideas that have, and I think a lot of people have weighed in on this. We've talked to some of the street musicians, a few have come to our meetings. We've talked to the police department, we've talked to business owners. There's been a lot of different discussions, Kent's been involved in some of those. And some of the ideas that have sort of come up again and again are suggestions about moving. So rather than someone being planted in one spot for five hours, that they move every hour. There's been a lot of people coming back to the idea of not amplifying, but also realizing that things can get loud even without an amplifier. So that may or may not resolve the problem. Issues about distance, and whether we need to space out where people are. And also, there's been proposals about permits. And looking at a permit structure, which could be different, depending on whether you're local or out of town. Most municipalities do that. Depending on whether you're profit or non-for-profit. So are you putting a hat out to make money? Are you just doing it, you're a high school kid and having a little fun? So there are a variety of things that have been brought up. And so, really what this is about, after we got past the second, the first part, which is what someone can do today if they have a complaint, is to have a discussion about what kinds of ideas would make sense so that we can basically all get along. I will mention that there has been discussion about a more comprehensive look at things, business activities that are happening downtown. Do, should people that are just setting up a jewelry table on the sidewalk be required to get a permit and that sort of thing? So, I guess I do want to mention that because it's not just focused on the street musician issue. There are plenty of complaints that I've heard about food trucks, about, you know, vendors that, you know, just kind of show up and put up their shingle and that sort of thing. So those are, I guess those are sort of the three levels that we might be looking at. This is not something we're going to resolve tonight. And, and really, at this point, I am interested in hearing thoughts, how we can approach this in a constructive way. But I guess the one thing that I hear over and over again is, the goal here is not to quash, shut down, or limit the great things that we all love about Yellow Springs. I think that the music downtown, the busking adds a lot of value. It can be really great. But when it starts to get to the point where people are yelling on the streets, people are uncomfortable, people are angry, I feel that we have to resolve it in some way. And so, I guess that's kind of the background.
I would, I would say, though, that we actually do have, just as we have the decibel level ordinance, we do have an ordinance requiring permits of, for sellers. And Patty and I actually talked about it before the meeting. She thinks that that could actually be pretty easily extended, or could cover the street musicians. Because there is, there is commerce with most of them, there is commerce involved. So, I think we could probably, we could probably use the two ordinances that we already have, potentially, and decide that we're, that we're going to authorize the PD to, to enforce it. It just hasn't been enforced, they haven't been enforced. I believe that if, that if people go door to door, if we hear about a door to door salesperson, they will, you know, somebody will call, those people do have to come into town, or come into the PD and get a, get a permit. I think that, that the PD's pretty good about that. But when it comes to anybody that's vending downtown, there hasn't been any, any of that happen. You know, again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, that, I don't know if that's the direction we want to go, but I think we probably have, already have the law in the books that could potentially cover it. And I did hear a pretty bad horror story about a noise ordinance situation with a decibel meter that we've had in the past, that makes me really question if that's, if that's, if the decibel meter's going to work. Because it, you can't, you can't get it, it takes in all the ambient noise. You can't just say, okay, how loud is Joseph's steel drum? It's, if there's a semi coming down the road, it takes it all in. So it's going to be virtually impossible to use that decibel meter to read a specific sound and make a determination from that. And I, I was hoping that that would be kind of an easy, an easy solution.
If we, as you said, we have items on the book that, that cover that, that I would hope that, before we did decide to enforce that part of our, our ordinance, that we would at least notify the musicians in question that, you know, at this point in time, at some point in time, we may let, or if we'd like to do it, give them a little grace period before we just say, hey, you, you gotta give them a permit and so forth, so that they're well aware of it. But hopefully, we can, can solve it without having to go to the extreme measure of, you know,
Right.
police activity and so forth.
The Portland agreement was in our packet. It's a voluntary agreement, but it seemed pretty common sense. And I don't know how exactly they promulgate it. Like, do they give a copy of it to every musician? Do the police just have them in the car, and, or businesses have them?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, they just kind of have cards and say, you know, hey, if you didn't know, this is how we operate.
Isn't there an organization, though? Isn't there almost like a union, or some kind of a musician's organization?
They ask everybody to join.
That's how, that's how it's done.
The PDx busk.
But then, but then the PD does get involved. I mean, again, if it, if it, if people don't follow that, they still have the...
Yeah, it's the noise ordinance and the other violations. But they haven't really passed any new laws. What they've done is, this is, this is an agreement between the people were mostly working and running businesses downtown, and the musicians. So, that's my two cents. Obviously, I'm neither a business owner anymore, or a, or a musician who plays on the street, so...
You could be.
Never know. But at this point, it, I like the idea that it's, it's a more of a coming together of the parties, rather than laws coming down from on high that are a little bulky.
I like that, too, yep.
Well, I'm not sure that the Portland agreement would be very effective here. The idea, I think we're so small that the idea of moving from one place to another is not, would not make that much difference. To me, it seems like the two main things are the level of noise and the length of the noise. And it's not just amplification. I mean, I was downtown on Friday, and with Will, Will and the young man that was playing with him, who was playing saxophone. It was very difficult to have a conversation across the street with the saxophone. I couldn't hear the guitar particularly, but the saxophone was not being amped, but it was quite loud. And I found it to be, would really dramatically take away the experience of being able to be downtown. So, I mean, clearly, business owners want to be able to have their business and not be disrupted. And people who want to be downtown and see their friends, or sit down and have something to eat, want to be able to do that, and be able to talk to each other. And when you can't do that, then that is really a nuisance. And so I would like to see something that would limit the time that someone can be, I mean, an hour seems like enough time to me. Or maybe two times a day, an hour. And then make a distinction between the high school kids that come down to sort of show what they're doing, or maybe the community band people that come down. I mean, to me, that's very different. And they come down maybe once, or maybe a couple times a year, and someone who's coming down every day, or several times a week. And I'm not, I don't know that a gentleman's, I'm not, I think we need to probably have something stiffer than just some kind of agreement, like the Portland agreement.
The police department would like something. I mean, they, they've been called a couple of times, and, and they, you know, they've asked people to move. And, but I think that they feel like they don't necessarily have the, a law behind them. You know, they'd like to be able to state something that...
So...
Yeah, we should, Patty, do you have anything to say before you, before we ask for citizens?
No, I mean, the, the only thing I can say is, I've not been in Yellow Springs that long, but I've walked down the street, and I was out actually Sunday, and I think you were playing on Sunday, and...
It's on Saturday.
Oh, well, okay. But that was very nice with the, you know, the guitar and the, and I really enjoyed that. And then I got a little further down the road, and the steel drum with the calypso music was a bit loud. And I found that a little, you know, disconcerting. But overall, I personally don't have a problem with the street musicians. I think it's kind of a neat thing. I'm not very musically inclined myself, but I enjoy listening to it. But I do think that in some circumstances, it might be a little bit overwhelming if it continues for a long period of time.
I, I know that there are folks here to talk, who would like to start? Oh, Will, he got up first.
My name's Will Cook, I'm a street musician, busker, street performer. And I'm pretty much against any formal regulation, police enforcement, you know, any, you know. I think what's going on right now is that basically, a few business owners, which I don't see any of them here, have a problem with one person. And I think that maybe through mediation or something, if they, if we could organize the concerned business owners, villagers, whoever, and, you know, myself, I'd be happy to lead the musicians, or what, you know, organize them to come together, where we actually have people present, and we can come to some kind of, you know. I think that, you know, I looked at the Portland agreement, I think a lot of those kind of things, the moving around and stuff, I think that's a lot of, you know, I think most of it's ridiculous. I do like the idea that it is an agreement, you know, and it's based on respect, and it's between two people, you know. And it's, or between, you know, two entities, I guess. And, I, you know, I feel like it, it doesn't need to have a whole list of rules that you, you know, you're going to explain to somebody that just came into town to play. Like, somebody, they're just going to have to find out from the police that they're violating something. And are they going to warn them, are they going to give them a ticket, are they going to arrest them? You know, this is like, you know, these are things that we've got to think about, because, you know, we're out there doing our thing, and, you know, busking is sometimes for donations, it's sometimes for charity. It's, you know, it's not panhandling, it's not, you know, if I'm selling CDs, yeah, I'm selling wares. And I, you know, I understand that that's, you know, if there's a permit or something for that, okay. You know, but I don't, I just don't think that all that's necessary. You know, I mean, the, the people that have had the problem, it has escalated between those two, two groups of people. And something needs to happen where they can sit down and talk about it, to come to some kind of agreement without all this happening. You know, all this legislation, all this stuff, and, yeah, I mean, you've got to think about, like, if there is going to be legislation, okay. Is all the sidewalk public property, is it part of the businesses discretion as to who can play out there? Is it just music? Is it, you know, is art, is sidewalk chalk, or, you know, or things like that? You know, juggling, whatever, is all that, does the juggler have to move? You know, he's not loud, he's not bothering anybody. You know, it's just stuff like that, that, it's a lot of things that I think that need to be, if there were regulations, there's a lot of things that need to be kind of thought out and really defined, like a lot of terms need to be defined. I'm against that, I think y'all need to spend your time doing other stuff, personally. You know what I mean? Like this, you know, this has become this big issue that we're spending time on, but it's me and a couple other musicians out here to basically be like, you know, hey, there's not really that big of a problem. You know, and like, when you came over the other day, you asked us to tune, to turn it down a little bit, and we did. You know, not, not, you know, we didn't sit over there and play the sax, you know, he didn't just sit over there and whistle on the saxophone, you know. But it's a respect thing, like, I respect you coming over there and sharing, you know, your concerns with me. And we made an effort to, you know, turn it down a bit. Same thing with Tom, you know, I play in front of Tom, that's where I, you know, typically play. I used to play four or five hours, you know. And it's like, I think that if we can all talk about stuff and have a respect thing, and, okay, if Tom wants me to tune it down or move down the street, I'll go down the street. You know, do I think that he's got a right to tell me, I'm just using him for example, because that's where I play. But, you know, unless he owns a sidewalk, so he has a right to tell me that I can never play there? You know, or I can only play here at these certain times? Or is that even, not even a business owner's concern? You know, or not concerned, but, you know.
Thanks, Will, we're going to get some other people.
Yeah, I should have turned the timer on a little bit. But basically, that's what I'm saying, I'm against, you know, I'm against regulation. I'd like to, you know, communicate and work something out, because this affects me, affects other people, it affects y'all, affects villagers, business owners, and everything, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Keep me updated and let me know what's going on.
Right, and before we have Tony come up, Will, you can sit down, but I just wanted to say a couple things directly to that. I love what you just said about if you could help mediate with, you know, the musician side of things. That's what we've wanted from the beginning. When the Portland agreement came, came up, what people really liked was the respect aspect, that, you know, it looked at both sides of the issue. So that, you know, if you're a business owner, you don't just come out and start yelling, but, you know, we actually respect both sides. So, that's what we've wanted all along. My concern at this point is it's gone on for three months, and these escalations keep happening. So unless those discussions happen, then, you know, I mean, we've got to figure out something. But we're definitely not planning to just drop one of these ordinances down. It does have to be talked about, and if you could do that, that would be great.
Okay, well, show me the avenues to, you know, not real familiar.
Be in contact.
Hello? My name is Tony Powers, I'm a press operator and a street musician and a resident of Yellow Springs. I'm going to keep this pretty simple, I don't do this very often, so what I have to say is short, but I am very grateful for the opportunity to say it. I'd like to underscore what Will said about the non-necessity for a structured limitation on this kind of expression. The street life is the lifeblood of this community. It's comprised of the shopkeepers, and the vendors, and the performers. Those are the people who are the face of this village when somebody comes here for the first time, when somebody keeps coming back, and has someone that they have regular conversations with. And I think to cut off a piece of that, or limit a piece of that, is going to be dangerous for the community, for expression, for the kind of place where children grow up learning that it's safe to go on the street and say or do what they mean. I agree with Will that some kind of mediation needs to happen, too. As a street musician, I have witnessed and partaken in a number of discussions with different business owners, most of them peaceful, one of them aggressive. All of them resolved, and required no police participation. And the only thing that happened was a discussion between myself or another musician and a business owner. A lot of these dialogues resulted in friendships with business owners, and every single one of them resulted in an understanding. I think it is the most helpful and respectful way to go about resolving this kind of conflict. If we need to have a more structured kind of discussion, like a mediated kind of discussion, it's something I would like to participate in, and I know a lot of the other street musicians would like to participate in. And as Will said, show us the way to do it, and we would like to do that. I stand against coming up with some kind of ordinance that will limit people. I don't think it's going to take care of either the village or individual conflicts. And I think it will just, I don't know, create stresses on people. That's about all I have to say, so.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I am, Janet Mury, I am a business owner. And my problem with it is not just the volume, you know, the volume is an issue, it's the time. Hearing the same music for hours on end, and not being able to open the door to my business, feeling sort of trapped. You know, I can't hear the own music in my store, you know, that I choose to have. And, you know, I can't get the fresh air in the shop, because it drives me crazy to have the door open. And, you know, you end up feeling a little bit victimized. Now, I do not like the idea of having to legislate this. But from my perspective, a little bit of music is a great thing. But three to five hours of it, of the same music, oh, you know, is exhausting. And I'd like to see some sort of way to move people along. That doesn't seem like too much to ask. I love the live music in town, I think it's great. But what you said here about not being able to carry on a conversation, I think is important also. It's an important aspect to the town, just as important as having live music. We're a very small town, so it's, you know, we don't have parks around that people can move some distance away so that the music is enjoyable while it's at some distance from you. You know, it's right there, wherever it is. But when you are in your shop for hours, you know, on end, and the music doesn't move, you know, you're stuck. So, from the perspective of the businesses, I think that's where they are primarily coming from. You know, we can enjoy it, but it's, it's too long.
Thank you.
And there's so much of it, I mean, you get so many, you know, all these different types of music at the same time. It's like a mishmash. And there's so much of it, I mean, you get so many, you know, all these different types of music at the same time, it's like a mishmash, you know.
Uh, Robert?
Robert Peschel. I sell T-shirts in King's Yard. So, a few times lately, I've been out selling T-shirts, and, um, there hasn't been excessively loud music. That, of course, is my valued judgment, and it is extremely refreshing and unstressful. And I'd just like to say something about something, the difference between augmentation and assault. When it's too loud, it's an assault. And when it's not too loud, it's a wonderful augmentation to the harmony of downtown, to the whole scene. And I too, I mean, I completely believe in expression and there being free expression. I do have an issue with sound level. And I feel that if it's too loud, moving somebody from one side of the street to the other side of the street is not a viable solution. And, long-lived expression and augmentation and not assault. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Uh, Paul?
Paul Avendroth, and I'm not a business owner downtown. The problem I've had downtown with loud noise and so on, is with businessmen. They're not there for the art, I don't believe, they're there for the cash. So, they should be regulated just like any other business. I think we should use the laws on the books to register them, to make sure they're filing village income tax forms, and to deal with objectionable noise continuous. That's not art, that's a business, and it should be dealt with as a business, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Other comments? Uh, John?
I guess I just wanna say that I basically agree with what Robert said, that, um, that I would see the volume as being more of an issue. And, I guess I have to assume that some sort of technology must have been invented where you can actually point it at an object at a certain distance, be able to get a consistent reading, that, just like, bring back to life the possibility of regulating on the basis of noise level.
Thanks, John. Joan?
Well, I'm Joan Edwards, I'm neither a business owner nor a street musician or a street artist. However, I am a resident of the community and have been for many years. And, um, I want to underline what Paul had to say, is that some of these people who are the street musicians, this is truly a business, and I don't know if we have laws on the books that say, okay, you have to register as a business. I have to pay, I just paid the second half of my property taxes, and I pay a huge amount of property taxes for my very little, relatively inexpensive initially, home. And if people are coming in and these people don't live here, what are they contributing financially to our community? And I would be willing to bet that a lot of business owners' objections have to do with the fact that people are being driven out of their establishments by the level of noise and the repetitiousness of certain of the street musicians. And I think that really needs to be addressed. And I don't know if they're paying taxes on the money that they bring in, I don't know if they have an accounting system that, um, is accountable to our community, but I think it needs to be, because otherwise, it's free money. I don't get free money, I worked very hard for the money that I made. And I really, um, you know, I mean, I appreciate if people are just starting out and, um, they're playing and they have, um, something to contribute to the community artistically, I think that's wonderful. But on the other hand, if there's a business there, and there's a couple of these people that have to be business people, that I don't know if they're paying taxes on what they bring in, but I'll bet they don't live in our community and don't contribute financially. And we talk about, you know, we're having problems with the amount of money that our government has to spend on things that are absolutely crucial, like our water system and our sewer system and our streets, that people who are getting money from being able to be in our community need to be able to contribute back to the community financially. And I do object to a couple of the people who play incredibly loudly and the same thing over and over again. And I can only imagine, and I know the business that Janet is referring to, that's the, one of the King Yard, King's Yard businesses, they've got to be suffering in their, in their stores by having to close their doors so that they don't have to deal with the same music hour after hour.
Thanks, Joan. Anything else?
I'm sorry, that was a brief, man?
Real quick, you were, you were very, you were very brief last time.
Um, personally, I see the, the music downtown as being a public service, and, um, and so, and to the extent that people get any money out of it, I doubt that it's as much as it, as I feel like it contributes to the village. And I also wanna, um, agree with what people have said, that it's probably just one musician that's mostly being complained about.
Thanks, John. So, what do you think, and Brian, after you've heard his input?
Well, I mean, you know, again, my, I, I will definitely say, the one comment that resonated with me is, we have other things that we would rather be focusing on. But at the same time, if a problem comes up and it, it's continually not resolved and it can't be worked out by talking, I, I feel like it's wrong for us to just kick it down the road. So, that being said, the first thing that I would, I would love for any interested parties to do is come to our next Public Art Commission meeting, which is next Wednesday, the sixteenth. That's a good forum to have discussions, Ken's been there, Patty will be there. Because that is the way I would love for this to go. You know, like Lori said, an agreement, you know, how can we all get along? That's, that's the Yellow Springs way in my mind. That being said, I think we have to have some short-term solution. And, so, what I would like to recommend is, I, I tend to agree with John, I, I find it hard to believe that a decibel meter cannot work. I mean, maybe there have been horror stories in the past or things, but I, I would guess that technology is to a point where you can point it, you can find out how loud it is, you can say, Joseph, look, this is in violation, we're getting serious now, please resolve this. And so, that would be my recommendation, that we have something that people can do now so that we avoid these escalations. Is that gonna be ultimately the resolution to the problem, I'm not sure. But I think we do have to figure out something that we can do now, and then continue to have these discussions so that we ultimately come up with the best resolution.
My understanding is we have a noise meter, we have a decibel meter.
They couldn't find it when I was there.
They might wanna see, somebody might need to do some research to find out. I mean, you can pick up your phone and if you've got the right app, you can find out what music is playing, right? I mean, audio technology has improved so much that I would have to suspect there's gotta be better ones than the ones we bought-
Right.
-fifteen years ago.
But again, it's the ambient noise, I mean, that's the problem, you can't, it's-
No, you, you could have, you could test the ambient noise, and then you can test the ambient noise with whoever's playing and subtract the ambient noise and get the decibel up.
You get attorneys involved in that discussion and see what they have to say about it.
Well, I mean, most of the time attorneys don't get involved, most of the time, if you showed somebody the number.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, the time it did happen here, it was with the-
I know, but that was, that was a pretty different situation than street musicians.
Why don't we do this, um, Brian, you say that the Public Arts Commission meeting is next Wednesday, the sixteenth. Why don't you let me look into what decibel meters are out there and available and what kind of technology, and if you can, in fact, filter out the other ambient noise?
Right.
And I'll bring that to the Public Arts Commission meeting on Wednesday. And maybe we can go from there as far as enforcing the, the decibel ordinance that we have, you know, on file.
Right, 'cause maybe we find out that this ordinance is not workable. But, yeah, I, I think that we have to, 'cause I, I will go on record saying, I know it's basically one person, three that have been commonly complained about, nobody in this room. And, you know, I, I think that we have to respond to it, I, I think it is our duty. And so, um, but again, it, it's, it's been one of the issues that I hoped would self-resolve and go away, 'cause, I mean, I am the ki, I love the downtown music, none of it bothers me. But, if it's bothering enough people and we're talking about it enough and it continues to be an issue, we've gotta do something. And I think we can do something that's, you know, again, not really restrictive and is very respectful. And I love that there are people here today that are interested in talking about this, so.
So, is the Public Arts Commission gonna come with a recommendation to council?
Yes, I mean, and with Patty's-
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to be honest, I do have some concerns about the, the decibel meter and if anyone would test it in court, but I'm more than willing to see if the technology exists that would filter out the ambient noise and allow you to just concentrate on the one source.
But I think ultimately what we wanna do is come back, ideally at the next meeting, with a recommendation that doesn't continue to cause people to be arguing on the streets and turning up their music to see who can be louder and everything else. And that's ultimately what we wanna resolve. And again, that has nothing to do with anybody in this room, so.
On a slightly different subject, but somewhat related, I do know that a couple of years ago at Planning Commission, there was discussion about food trucks being required to register with the village. That is not being done. And, um, and, and, and I don't believe that there are supposed to be vendors on the, on the south end of the BP parking lot. So, I mean, those are some issues I think we need to, and that was established at a, at a Planning Commission meeting.
You mean, the vendors by the-
By-
Bondities? They're allowed to have tables there, what they're not supposed to have is-
They all have tables.
Umbrellas, because they're too high and they block the window.
Actually, I thought the same thing that you thought.
No higher than a van.
Pulled the, uh, the minutes from that Planning Commission meeting, and in fact, that discussion became so weighty, shall we say, that that was tabled and, and, and the petitioner was asked to bring back the request for any vendors at the south end of that lot, and was never given permission to have vendors at the south end of that lot.
Oh, okay.
So.
I mean, those are issues- That needs to be enforced.
So, are you-
That simply needs to be enforced.
So, Planning Commission said that the food trucks had to have permits?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you saying that they're not doing, that the food trucks are not doing?
They have a permit to be a food truck, which has to be established through the place that lets them park there and sell food. But, but in addition to that, they're supposed to-
Register with the village. There's a financial transaction that's supposed to take place.
As a solicitor.
Yes, correct. Earning money within, yeah, the village, yeah.
Okay, we're done with that discussion?
Yes.
Great, okay. Brian, to you again, approval of a new Public Arts Commission member?
Okay, so, uh, we, uh, have two open spots on the Public Art Commission, and, um, we had an application that came right to, at our last meeting, but it went so long, and that is Christine Monroe Beard. And I think everybody has her letter of intent and, and resume. One thing that's, uh, I really like about bringing Christine on board is that we have, uh, it's been a commission of five white guys for a while, and so, it's nice to have some diversity. The other thing is that Christine has a background in design, so she's got that interest. And, being a business owner, I think she brings an interesting element that complements, uh, the commission. And I think all of us know her, so I would like to recommend that we approve her to be on the commission.
You making a motion?
I am, I'd motion to do that.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, next, um, there was, um, the Planning Commission met, when was the Planning Commission meeting? Twenty-third, June twenty-third. It was the, a meeting to review and approve the, a solar array, the one megawatt solar array for Antioch College. It's my understanding that that was a five, five to zero vote, it was a conditional permit. Planning Commission voted five to zero to approve that. Within the ten-day period, as is allowed by law, there was an appeal filed by neighbors, by a citizen group. So, we will be hearing, um, we will be having an appeal hearing on July twenty-first at our council meeting. The appeal is made to council, and it's pretty well-defined in, in the Planning Committee, or in the, in the zoning code, section twelve seventy-six point zero-three. It defines the powers of the council to review a decision made by the Planning Commission. Essentially, our review of the Planning Commission's decision to permit the solar installation is limited to whether there were any procedural inadequacies, which means council will determine whether the Planning Commission failed to adequately consider an important argument of those opposed to the permit. This will not be a rehearing, this will not be another, we will not be rehearing all of the arguments. We will be reviewing basically the decision, how the decision was made, and, um, we, we may ask for testimony from neighbors and from Antioch College, but we don't have to. People are not entitled to participate in the discussion. So, we will see how that happens, but it will happen at the next meeting. I would say, I, Judy, I mean, is it, is it, it's not in legis, is it in legislation, when do we do it in the meeting? I didn't, is it, would you know, Patty, do you know, I mean, have you-
Yeah, that's a great question.
You mean, when do you do the public hearing on the-
Yeah, when do we have the appeal hearing?
Is it, is it, is it legislation, or is it, uh?
I would think it would be strictly a correspondence, because you're, you're not actually going to- I would think you would do it under leg, under the-
So, we could put, do it under new-
Correspondence section.
Well, what about new business, I mean, we should, you think we should do it under, I mean, we're gonna have a hearing, we're gonna be, we're gonna be reviewing and discussing.
Well, it's not, I would not put it in, um, public hearings in that it's not an open-
Okay, so let's put it under new business, just, and, and if Chris has a, if Chris has a-
Chris may, Chris may have advice on us for that. Questions?
Yeah, and, and I guess when he, when he does and he sends it out, 'cause, um, you know, if it's my understanding, does council approve what is done by Planning?
Not in this situation, sometimes we do, no. This, this, this is an appeal, so, and, and as I said, it's only the, the procedural part, it's not the actual decisions themselves.
Okay, that's-
So, what I would like to ask of Judy, though, is if, um, we could make sure we have copies of the DVDs, or are they both on, are they both on YouTube?
The last two meetings are on YouTube.
Plant, the last two Planning Commission? So, maybe if you could send us links to those planning, to those YouTube videos and get us the minutes of the meeting? And if you could do that before, 'cause that's gonna be a lot to digest, so if you could get it to us sooner.
Well, I believe, I can, I can get you draft minutes, I actually have them done tomorrow, and they will be drafted. I, I have asked Planning Commission if they'll meet, just for a brief meeting on the twenty, or fourteenth, to approve the minutes, so you're working with approved minutes, and I think that'll, everyone's agreed to that. In order to approve those, we need a full quorum, and the people who have to abstain can't-
Correct.
Can't be part of the quorum, so you'll need to make sure you contact the, the alternates and folks who are, who participated.
But you can send the link to the YouTube app-
I'm sure I can.
Very soon.
Or maybe, Brian, you know-
Yeah, I'll, I'll forward them to Judy and, yeah, on top of that.
But I guess just for clarification, I wanna understand as, you know, one being a, a voting member on Planning, now being on, on council, what role?
That's fine, no, it's, that role's dual, it's a dual role. That's fine, no, it's, that role's dual, it's a dual role, and it happens all the time.
And then the second part of it is, as a council person, just what should I be looking for in that document that we're going to be asked?
Chris will, what I think, when we get this information, if we can just review it, Chris will be sending us a pretty detailed, as he did for Planning Commission, I think he provided Planning Commission a pretty detailed process for how to be, to go through the process, how to ask the questions. He'll do that for this, so we'll know exactly what we're.
Because I don't, I only want to look at what I have to actually have to.
Right. But I mean, you probably don't need to watch the YouTube video.
You were there.
Yeah, I was there.
You can reread the minutes to refresh your memory by your.
So that will probably be, I don't know, that will probably be, I'm guessing, maybe around eight o'clock in the evening, by the time we get to that order of business, we'll see after, I guess, when we get to future agenda items. So, on to the manager's report. Kent did provide a brief report in the, well, actually, it wasn't a brief report, but he did provide a newsletter in the, that actually reviewed most of what we've already talked about. Kent, was there anything you wanted to, you wanted to talk about that was in your report that we didn't discuss?
It's been several days, I haven't really been able to say.
Well, there was beavers, there was.
The Woodrow Street. There were beavers!
Beavers were not present at that meeting.
There was no quorum of beavers.
Okay, great, okay. Patty, do you have anything to report?
I would just like to comment on that meeting, I went to the Beaver meeting.
The Beaver meeting?
The Beaver meeting, yeah, yeah.
The Beaver Summit.
And, and I do want to, if, I don't know whether Jason has the information that he needs to order the very simple apparatus that can be put into the detention area to allow water to flow through. And John Eastman, I think, can be helpful in determining the level of water that we want to get to. But, but, I mean, we laugh, I mean, I have become a great fan of beavers, but I think as the village continues to grow denser, and we know that there's a concern about open space, that it really is important for us to be looking at our public lands, our parks. And this piece of public land is an amazing opportunity to have a naturalized wetland that can be used by elementary kids, high school kids, Antioch College, and villagers to, and of course, all the diversity of species that comes to a wetland, which people are understanding increasingly are so important. And as human development has been rampaging over the land, the opportunity to have something like this is even more important, I think, so.
I think it's great, but it was built as a detention pond, and so that, that's the primary purpose.
That is the purpose, and, and there's a conservation designation on that fourteen acres.
Nobody's holding the conservation designation.
But it's designated conservation zoning in the zone.
Conservation zoning, right, but it's not.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I mean. And fourteen acres, it might as well be, have the highest purpose. And if it can serve both purposes, which I don't see any reason why it can't, I think that makes sense.
But, and I guess I want to speak for the people that live in the neighborhood and down below it, I still say we also have a responsibility to them. We, by no fault of our own, we created an issue that has impacted people that live down from the conservation area, so, you know.
I don't, I mean, I'm not sure that that's true.
All I'm saying is, is that, you know.
It could, if left unattended, it could.
But right now, it does create an issue for the people that are below it. And there were quite a few in there at that meeting that voiced their concern, so I feel we still, we have to take that into consideration also.
Patty, anything you'd like to add?
You know, it's just, when I came up for my two-day interview process, I will call it a grilling, because I actually had a lot of fun. I thought, you know, this would be a really interesting place to be, and my first day has confirmed that. This is a really interesting place to be, and I'm still having fun, so. It's been a long, it's been a really long day, but God love Kent, we started at eight thirty this morning, and I haven't really stopped, but I look forward to many, 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 many more interesting days.
Thanks, Patty.
There's a Chinese curse that goes.
Judy, is it a Chinese curse?
That, may you, the Chinese curse is, may you live an interesting time.
Well, you know, boring is just, you know, boring's just not my thing, so.
Karen Scott had to stand up.
Oh, Scott.
Hi, I'm Scott Stoltenberg, and I want to, for one, I want to thank Kent for creating the Beaver Summit. It's really helped me to understand what's happening throughout the whole watershed, especially all the information that Eastman brought. I'm a big supporter of the green space there, but I do want it to serve, I mean, I want everyone happy. I think the process that you're going to try and do to mitigate what the beavers are doing will hopefully make it work the way it's supposed to, and preserve land that I think has an amazing educational potential, especially for this town. There's almost no wetland you can go into anymore, because they're all protected. You can't get near them unless you have a scientific permit to go in. And it's hard to get kids, especially nowadays, interested in those things. If they don't experience them, they're not going to grow up and protect them. And it's amazing to walk back there and see the species that have been there already and are still arriving. And so, I'm very hopeful that this process will work, and I think there's amazing potential in that piece of land for Yellow Springs, besides just providing the detention basin. I just wanted to put that in, and I say, I really appreciate allowing everyone to have their input, so.
Thanks, Scott. Judy, clerk's report?
Yeah, I put information in that you can explore at your leisure about the referendum process, and then again, about the appeal process, so that's just there for your information. It's been busy, 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 and welcome to Patty.
Great. Future agenda items, we do have, there are a couple of other pieces of legislation. We have the, what was the ordinance that we had, the personnel policy? Let's see, everything else was a resolution, so we've got two new ordinances that related to funding. Will Jason be ready for the Sutton Farm Plan? Are we ready to hear Jason about the Sutton Farm Plan?
He, I believe he will be ready.
Okay, so we'll add that. Are we ready for an eGov update? Do we need an eGov update to council?
I, we're not ready, right?
No, we're not ready.
Maveka, are we ready to hear from Maveka?
Yeah, and, I mean, I hope we can have that on the 21st, so it's available.
I would like to add to the future agenda items, the question about the moratorium on the herbicide. And I, I'm actually wondering if we need to have somebody look at our old, what the, what the Environmental Commission came up with, because when you're running a big system like this, it will need to be worded very carefully, because there could be termites, and it can be very difficult to deal with termites if you've got a ordinance that says you're not allowed to use ever any chemicals at all. And so, I think we do need some care with how the, how that is worded, and I'm not sure how we should go about it, but we need to have that discussion.
Do you have any experience, Patty?
Not, not with that, but my suggestion would be, if there is something that the Environmental Commission has looked at in the past, if I could get that information.
Judy has, yeah.
Then I can go from there and maybe see what other municipalities have on the books. You know, a lot of times you don't need to reinvent the wheel, you just need to tweak it a little bit to make it fit your situation. So we could, that would be my suggestion as a way to proceed and try to make it fit our needs.
Okay, great.
And I do know that.
What the, what the Environmental Commission wrote was never actually formally adopted by council.
Yeah, I would say, just a blanket prohibition is not a good approach, because there are places in the village where we need to use herbicides particularly, they're not public use areas, there are things like the substation, and the wastewater treatment plant, and so on, there where the general public is not affected. But the alternative is extremely labor-intensive, and that's the one thing we're short of.
I do know the staff is troubled by it, I've already been asked by staff about spraying, and I've said no, that we, the moratorium is still in place.
So we definitely need to deal with this issue, so we'll get it on the agenda.
And, you know, and.
And I don't know if we need to go back and look at it, because I thought in that, we did, that we did allow for some areas that they could do, and I didn't think we just blatantly said no.
Well, the place I was asked about was a pretty public place, so.
No, I'm not, and I'm not talking about the public, I'm talking about the real outline.
We, it was really never even written down, except in minutes, so it was not a formal piece of legislation, it was purely, we were dealing with the crisis, so.
So hopefully we can have that, yeah, I agree, that's good. Let's see, personnel policy ordinance, thought bubble, I just feel like that goes a little bit with the website, or not?
Yeah, we talked about maybe August 4th for that one, so we can reevaluate. And actually, we'll have some feedback from the Public Art Commission, because I've asked Matthew Kirk to present there, just to kind of, you know, bring us some feedback, so I'll have something at our next meeting.
Do you think we'll have something on, will we have something on the?
Street musicians, yes.
Street musicians, you think, okay.
In the form of just a recommendation or discussion, or do you know?
Yeah, I would say recommendations, and hopefully, we'll at least, once Patty does some research, have sort of the short-term process or policy.
And with the Planning Commission appeal, I think that's probably enough for our agenda.
For future.
When, no, go ahead.
I want to bring back, and bring everybody up to speed on where we stand on the upgrade to the council chambers.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Patty, are you aware of that situation?
Well, I am.
Did you talk to her about it?
I was going to begin with her.
Okay, okay.
Judy and I were kind of talking about it a little bit today, because I knew it was, it was out there.
Yeah, exactly. You got to look at more experimenting, because we're getting some different opinions on just how good our mics are.
The other thing we need to make sure is on our radars, we obviously have to make a decision about softening. And I don't know.
Well, I feel like, let's wait for this consultant, I mean, isn't that what, didn't we kind of decide that we're going to let that person? Because I feel like we need to know how much it's going to cost.
Okay.
I, I mean, I am, I would love to do a lime softened plant, I mean, that's what I would, that's, that would be the ideal situation to me. I don't know, after what I learned tonight, that I would do a ion.
No.
Extreme plant.
Right.
Did you say, Lori, that we need to make a decision on whether we're going to go with softly, or?
Well, I just, I just didn't see it listed here in the agenda items, I just wanted to make sure that we are thinking about when we need to bring that back and how.
What do you think the timeframe will be?
Well, I need to write the RFQ, then you need to put it out there for, I think, thirty days is what ORC requires, and then you have to set a bid, you have to do a bid opening, so you're talking at least forty-five to sixty days.
But we have to, before we can do that, don't we have to have made a decision about?
You can, you can make, you can make the decision if you want, or you can let your consultant come back and say, I've looked at your plant, and this is, would be my recommendation to go this direction. Yes, you have these other options, but, I mean, that's entirely up to council. If council wants to make the decision as to which process to use first, you can do that, you can write it into the RFQ, that you're doing a specific process, or you can put an RFQ out there for your consultant to do that part, I mean, you have Hazen and Sawyer's information, I don't know that they necessarily made a recommendation.
No, no, they didn't.
So, I mean.
So we have to make some decisions, it sounds like, what we want in the RFQ.
I don't.
You can either make the decision that you want to go with a specific process, or you can ask the, you can hire a consultant to make a recommendation to you, based on, based on the discussions that he's going to have with you.
Yeah, I guess what I was, you know, do we need to make a decision that we are going to have soft water, and then have him come back with it, or do we, you know, because I, you know.
So basically, well. We have two RFQs, we have an RFQ for a consultant to help us guide the process, and an RFQ for the design build?
Yeah.
No.
No. Right now, we have one RFQ for the consultant to help with the design build.
Right.
Okay.
John, do you want to?
You know, one thing, just to step one back, you mentioned the ORC and the thirty days, I'm not entirely sure maybe Kent does as to whether or not, some of these RFQs, if it's a bid process, that's one thing, but I don't think they all require thirty days because of being a charter community, and we have our own rules, and I just don't know what they are, but just check on that, that timeframe, because that may not be there. You really have two distinct decisions. One is the type of treatment, and the other is the delivery method for the process. And I feel very strongly that you have to have a consultant, whoever that consultant is, you have to have a consultant you trust to work with you to get to the place where you're comfortable with what the decision is, because, I mean, I fully support the idea that the most environmentally sound solution is lime softening. And there's a, there's definitely cost to that, and if you're, and the other factor here is the cost of the project will depend very much on the design flow of the plant. So you have to have someone who's going to help you look at the recommended design flow. The current plant has a design flow of 1.7 MGD, so you could say, well, we're going to keep that same design flow, but I suspect that that design flow was originally established when the expectation was the community was going to grow a great deal, especially to the north with the Whitehall Farm, which is not going to happen. So there's a whole analysis of what should be the design flow, then there's the analysis of what softening process you want, and I don't think, you can't go out for a RFQ for design bid contractor until you've sufficiently established the design parameters. And that includes the size of the plant, the type of process that's going to be in it, and any other qualities that are going to be as part of that, that design. So you have to, I feel very strongly, you have to have somebody on board as, sitting on your side of the table, helping you through those kinds of decisions. And that's where the RFQ, the first RFQ would come in.
And your view would be that there is no point in us having, going ahead and having independent discussions about that until we have it, have the consultant on board?
Well, I mean, I think you can have discussions, and also, there's been talk in the past of having a task force, that would have representatives from council, but would not be, and it would be accountable to council, you would have knowledgeable citizens from a variety of perspectives, and sort through a lot of these issues when you're not taking up an hour of repetitive time at council meetings, and then come back with similarly strong recommendations from that process.
But I think maybe what Jerry and Lori are asking is, has the decision been actually made to soften the water to begin with?
Correct.
So I think that's, the question is, because you. So I think that's, the question is, because you really can't, the consultant's going to help you decide what type of softening, but you have to make the decision of whether you're actually going to soften in any form or not. Is that what you're asking, Jerry? Okay.
And one of the, I mean, I'm gonna do some checking with some people, some experts, other experts that I'm aware of, but there was one thing in the presentation tonight that I'm not as convinced of, the, the, that AWA study, that they get, presented the graphs and made a very strong statement-
Yeah, I wondered about that.
That, and I kept asking about the pH factor. My understanding of corrosion chemistry and softening chemistry is pH has a huge impact on corros, corrosion. And so when you're comparing one water that happens to be soft, but also happens to have a high pH, to a water that has high hardness but happens to have a low pH, you've got two really important considerations, and they only spoke to one of them. And I, I know personally, at US EPA and Cincinnati Lab, the best water chemist, drinking water chemist in the country, who works for US EPA, and I will contact him, and I'm sure he knows that study, and I'll have a conversation with him about the relationship between hardness and pH in that study. 'Cause I, that's one place, I was not gonna bring it up during the discussion, it just didn't make sense to have that discussion, and I'll also have it with Hazen and Sawyer, I know those people, and I can have that discussion in more depth. So I think there are some, some, the, the issue of softening or not softening is not necess, you can make that decision. Certainly, the businesses in town, given the meeting that I had with, and you were there, another, businesses are very much in favor of having soft water.
I think we need to at least have another discussion about softening.
Yeah, I guess, I, I mean, I, but, but again, you know, if, if a lime plant's gonna cost twice as much, I mean, I-
It may be a moot point.
To me, it, it isn't, and, and I really don't think I would support ion softening, from what I heard, unless there's something-
Well, and then the other is membrane or potentially swat.
I mean, I guess I feel like, us just having random discussions without an expert to guide us is-
Okay.
And I, I agree, I don't think we have to decide soften or not before we send out the RFQ. I mean, I, I would feel like the cost is gonna be important to our decision.
Now, the RFQ also, because the way the resolution was ordered, I think it was specifically an RFQ for someone to help you through the design build process, as a delivery method. So that's the other thing, is, is the, 'cause when you send out an RFQ, and you're asking specifically for someone to help you guide through a design build process, that's how they're gonna respond, they're not gonna respond as somebody who's gonna be designing a plant for design bid build.
Right. Kent?
Economically, it doesn't make any difference, it doesn't make a big difference whether the village includes the capital and the operating cost to soften, or whether we keep shifting that cost on to the individual users. And it's more economical, more efficient for the village to do it once, it's a central location. So, the cost of the plant is a consideration, but people will save that money on the other side. So if you raise the water rates, they don't have to buy softener salt, it's, it's a law.
For two-thirds of the village.
To me, that's just basically a policy decision, are we gonna soften or aren't we? And you don't need a lot of technical input to make that decision, now once you make, that's a political thing, and there're gonna be people in the community who don't want you to soften water, so you need to face that eventuality and deal with it, and make that decision, and then you can use the expert to decide which is the best way to do it.
And the, the weak acid process has many of the advantages, without some of the downsides, 'cause one of, he talked about higher operating costs, but one of the higher operating costs is with a lime softening plant, is you really won't, should not, probably, I don't know if EPA would even allow it to be operated when you don't have an operator present. So many small lime, lime softening plants operate for eight hours a day, and then shut down, and then you start it up again, so that affects the design flow for the plant, so that you can produce enough water during those eight hours, and then you've got weekends, so you gotta deal with staffing issues. That's one of the increases in operating costs, is how you staff the plant, whereas the plant you have now does not need to be fully attended. And there's other kinds of designs that don't need full attention, so you can have them operating 24/7, but without operators being there all the time.
These are, these are, I don't wanna get into a big, long discussion, this has gone on way too long. I, maybe we, maybe, I'm concerned now that we don't have the RFQ written correctly.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Why?
Because we're not asking for that.
Is it because of the design build, or because-
It specifically says design build.
Right.
And, and if we're, if we're considering doing something other than design build, then it's not written correctly.
But, we said we wanted to do design build, are we saying that that-
I think, I think we can probably decide, I mean, this is, what I feel is we need a consultant to, an, an independent consultant that is working for us, that is going to walk us through the process.
And help us think about those two questions.
Right, and I think that, I think that we can, once you read the RFQ, I think that you could probably determine that. I think that by their qualifications, I think you're gonna be able to determine if they're gonna be able to do that. Yes, you, you can, you just have to, you have to write your RFQ to get what you want.
Yes.
And- So, so I think, so, so, so the, the legislation is fine, you, you just write your RFQ to, to maybe fit, be more general.
Right, 'cause, I mean, what the title says is, you know, to support a decision to do that.
We have maybe two members of council work with Patty to make sure that this communication, which is happening very late at night and at the very end of a very long meeting-
Yeah, well, I will say, though, you guys are still in session, you could amend, you could, you know, amend this to take out the design build part, period.
I, I think that the legislation is fine, I think it's all a matter of how the RFQ's written, and I think that's a good idea, Lori, so.
I, I would like to do that.
Okay.
I would be happy to be involved while we're even-
Okay.
Working with the-
Yeah.
You know, since I've said, um, some of you've discussed the EPA-
Yeah, I mean, I, Jerry and I have been involved in the EPA, yes, I think so, yeah, we've kinda taken on that. So, Jerry and I.
Aaron and Jerry.
Okay. Can borrow your pen again? Okay, are we-
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, please make one, somebody.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.